Good evening, everybody. My name is Angela.
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
Oh.
I'll call you up, I'll call you up. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our regular open session Board of Education meeting. It is now five thirty P M. Have a roll call, please.
For President Hannah.
Present.
For Secretary Griffin. For Vice President Taylor.
Present.
Board Member Buchanan.
Present.
Board Member Dawson.
Present.
Board Member Morris, absent. Board Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Okay, thank you. Move right along to the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of its stands, one nation, under God, and the principle of liberty and justice.
Move right along to our moment of silence. This time, we ask that all cell phones either replaced on vibrate and or silent. Thank you. Move right along, Spotlight of Success.
Good evening, Board of Education, community members, teachers and staff. Today, we would like to spotlight Ms. Jones's class in terms of her interdisciplinary writing. And we have students, Mr. Kobe, Ms. Alana, Ms. K- Mr. Mr. Kayden and Ms. Zoe. So, thank you so much for the fifth grade class.
Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening. My name is Kobe Alexander. I'm a student in fifth grade in Ms. Jones's class. Today, I want to talk about how writing has made an impact on me in fifth grade. My good teacher, Ms. Jones, makes us use the wonderful Race Rubric, which stands for restate the question, answer the question, cite textual evidence that relates to the answer, and explain the evidence and summarize your writing. Ms. Jones spent the beginning of the year modeling the Race Rubric and always says she has high expectations of our writing. She modeled with the whole group when we did our close reading questions, and then she gradually released us into partner writing. I love the fact that she has set the expectation that we are to check each other's writing and to help push one another. My strength in writing is citing textual evidence, and something I want to improve on is writing more and adding more details.
Hello, good evening. My name is Aliana Leonardo, and I'm also in fifth grade in Ms. Jones's homeroom. Thank you, Kobe, for explaining the Race or Races Rubric. The Race Rubric helps me with my nightly reading and writing responses. Can you believe Ms. Jones makes us write at home too? Every night, the Race Rubrics help me focus on the questions in the text. Ms. Jones always says to write a response like she doesn't know the book. This helps me explain details that are in the text. We always know our standards and our essential questions, so we understand what we are learning. Our turn and talks helps me with writing. Talking about the questions helps me understand more of the text or the questions that is asked. A strength in writing is that I summarize well, and something I need to work on is my confidence when grading myself with the Race Rubric.
Thank you, Aliana. Good evening. My name is Kayden Harris. I'm in the fifth grade in Ms. Jones's class. As my classmates have said, we write every day. We start our day off with a writing prompt. We get some great writing prompts, like S E L prompts and finish the story prompts. I especially love the finish the story prompts. For example, one day, our writing prompt was to finish the story about going to bag's claim, and we got the wrong luggage. I was surprised to hear what soon my classmates have found the pads. We don't stop there. Writing is interdisciplinary across all subjects. I never knew that writing could be carried over to so many different subjects. We write our math responses, write in science, or reflect on our experiments, and we also write in social studies and new research. Writing is embedded in my everyday's learning experiences in Ms. Jones's classroom. My strength is restating the writing prompts or question, and what I'd like to get better at is adding more detail to my writing.
Hi, my name is Zoe Jeanette Leverston. I'm in Ms. Jones's class, and I am working every day on improving my skills. Doing things like writing my responses to reading prompts, working towards understanding my essential questions, using the Race Rubric, and increasing my vocabulary are all helping me achieve my goal of increasing my grades and standardized test scores. My fellow peers talked about many things that should be spotlighted in Ms. Jones's class, such as what the Race Rubric was. The Race Rubric is an essential part of being more intentional in our writing. We use our Race Rubric in class and at home as a tool to support us in our writing. We have also increased our experience, we have also increased our writing experiences by writing in all subjects. I know that writing is not an isolated thing, but that writing is a big part of all subjects. Writing in Ms. Jones's class is an interdisciplinary event. Writing responses to questions or writing prompts is one of my writing strengths. Writing from a different point of view is something I can improve on. I know that we are going to take these writing strategies and make huge gains on our math and I R tests. I would like to introduce you to Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Zoe. Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Jackson, community members and staff. My name is Ebony Jones. I'm a fifth grade teacher here at Lindup. Not only has writing been my favorite subject, but writing is important for students to understand class material, develop critical thinking skills, communicate ideas, opinions, and feelings. Dr. Betts had us review our previous I R scores and the standards that were covered a couple of years ago. During that time, I realized that writing weighed heavily on the I R assessment, but was not a primary focus. Dr. Betts then sent out a Google form to ask us about our goals in professional development. I remember replying that I wanted to focus on writing with all my students, as I noticed that writing weighed about thirty percent on the I R assessment in the fifth grade. To achieve that, I used the Race Rubric, incorporated technology with writing, facilitated parent share writing, tailored writing across all subjects, differentiated for each student, and had them grade themselves before I did. I discovered that when students graded themselves, they pushed themselves to write in great detail to achieve the score they wanted. The projected proficiency on I R in E L A for this year is twenty-six percent. With student prescriptions and with the writing instructions the students referred to, we will meet or exceed those expectations. We appreciate your time, attention, and all that you're doing to help us achieve our goals. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
All right, Ms. Jones, before you go, come back up. Wonderful job, first of all. Wonderful job with the things that you're doing with your fifth grade class. Um, behalf of the Board of Education, want to say thank you for everything that you're doing. Um, students, wonderful job. You guys got up there and spoke very, very well. So, the board is definitely proud of you guys, okay? Any other board members have anything to say to Ms. Jones or her class?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice President Taylor here. I just want to say after we got the nerve jitters out, you guys did an amazing job. You spoke really well. And I just want to honor you, and also the board wants to honor you, for just taking time out, not just showing up this evening, but actually speaking to us. You guys spoke really well. We're going to encourage you to do more, Ms. Jones. Thank you. Thank you to the staff here at the school as well. Our scores are going up. That's a tremendous deal for us, and we are so excited. So excited about this initiative. Thank you so much.
Madam Secretary.
Board Secretary Cheryl Griffin, I'd like to say thank all of you. It's amazing the passion that your students show, and I know that you instill that within them. You make learning fun for them, and that is shown with everyone that you brought before the board. And thank all of you and have a blessed and happy holiday.
Mr. Buchanan, anything? Mr. Dawson, anything?
Good job, kid. Good job.
Good job, good job.
I'd just like to say thank you so much. And what you all really don't know, and Mrs. Jones is really showcasing what she does in the classroom, but Mrs. Jones is somewhere who is here every day. She is our co-president of our Lindup Teacher Association. She's in about fifteen committees. Um, she's always willing to help and to figure out how we can get better. So, I would just like to publicly announce you or appreciate you publicly, and congratulations on your writing scores. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving right along to public comment. Public comment before we get started. Comments are limited to three minutes and will be heard in the following order on the agenda. Public comments pertaining to agenda to an agenda item will be heard before old and new business. Our other comments will be heard after old and new business and before executive session. If there are several comments concerning a particular agenda item and or topic, the board respectfully requests that one speaker is selected to represent a group. I have two public comment forums here. The first one is Ms. Tiffany Kilgore. Ms. Kilgore, we ask that you come up to the mic.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, the nature of me being here is because we have a dance team that resides and practice at the Broadway Park District. Uh, we have one nationally and statewide far as traveling back and forth to Florida. We're asking for generous donations to help students get to Florida to offset some of the expenses for the parents. This year, we have two of your students here at Lindup, Leida Kim, Kimbrough, and Nyla Winters, who will be honored at the twenty twenty-three state champion for dancing cheer due to their academic level. PAG Warner deals with athlete students, and also they really focus on education. If education is not in line, they pretty much do not let people participate. We do send our letters to the school to let them know that your students will be included in the national championship, but it's up to your discretion if you allow the students to attend. So, with some of the students being honored at the Lindup School, we thought that it would be nice enough to send a letter to see if you guys can find some of your students here at Lindup.
Thank you. Anything from any board members?
Uh, my name is Tanya Taylor, Vice President. Quick question. I'm sorry, didn't catch your name.
Tiffany Kilgore.
Ms. Tiffany, did the school, did you send a email already to the admin team?
Yes.
With all the details as far as the cost, the date, all the specifics?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my next question to you is, are you guys under the PAG Warner Athletic Charter?
Yes, far as the insurance to cover us when we are practicing on our own areas and also when we go out there to Florida.
Okay, and all that is covered in the email?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we have all our i's, that and t's, our p's.
Okay.
Just so we have better understanding of what, you know, what is going on.
Okay.
Thank you so much. How exciting. Congratulations, ladies.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, dancing divas. Next, Mr. Jonathan Patterson.
How you doing, board? How you doing? Got familiar with me, so I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody here. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody in the audience, you and your families. So, uh, my first question is, um, we have a something list of number ten on the agenda about recommendation of a new business for, uh, P T A versus P T O. Um, so, uh, I, but my question is different from that, but I'll get into that. Um, I wanted to ask the board, uh, is it proper protocol when a parent, any parent, you know, that we schedule a meeting with the superintendent, the, uh, principal, or any staff member? Is it protocol or any of us by laws that, um, board members usually attend and administer those meetings? And when, when parents typically, I mean uniformly, like any parent that schedules a meeting with a staff member here, is it protocol for one, two, or any board member to be present, uh, without the parent knowing who scheduled the meeting? Um, and is that uniform that we do that for every time a parent schedules a meeting with, uh, a staff member? Anybody can answer that maybe know that on board. That part of the bylaws? I would like a board member to answer, please.
Okay, hi. How are you? Good evening, uh, board member Tanya Taylor. So, you had three questions in one.
No, I just want.
I just wanted to break it down a little bit. Okay, so as far as, I think your first question, if I heard you correctly, please collect, correct me if I'm wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Your first question was you wanted to know within a meeting if a parent requests a meeting with admin staff.
Uh-huh.
It could be a staff, teacher, or someone in our, uh, executive team. Should a second person, and I think you said should a board member be present in that meeting?
No. No, I was asking, is it protocol that a board member attends a meeting with a parent? If they're requesting, if they requested a meeting with the staff member, is that proper protocol uniformly over any time a parent? Any parent, no matter what the situation is, is it uniform and is proper protocol for you all to attend the meeting and administer the meeting? Give feedback and all that in the meeting? Is that protocol to every time somebody requests a meeting with a staff member?
No, protocol would be that you would follow proper chain of command. That meeting request will go to our superintendent.
Okay.
And it would either disseminate from the, um, the school, uh, um, I'm looking right at you guys, and I can't get the title.
Administration?
As a one of the administrator, uh, and then it would go to our superintendent. At that time, the board is not product, protocol is not required that a board member attends that meeting. However, if the parent is seeking a board member presence, maybe a board member can make the meeting and listen to the meeting, but it wouldn't be a board member who would be communicating in that meeting.
Okay.
It can be requested. As far as policy is concerned, I have to look at the policy and tell you which policy. So, what I'm saying to you, you can go back and validate for yourself as far as the fact check is concerned. But no, that is not proper procedure where a board member would sit in a meeting with the parent.
Okay, yeah, I was just, you know, the reason, the nature of me asking that question because I've been in about three meetings at the school, and there was always a board member present. And I know I've been in the school district system for twenty-two years, and I, and I know everybody does things different at schools, and that's not protocol at my school district where the board member attend, give feedback, administer the meeting, you know, and especially with the parent not knowing, because if I schedule the meeting, I want to follow proper protocol and make sure and give that administrator or a teacher an opportunity first for us to resolve it, because this is the platform that you all provide for us to bring things if it needs to get to the board level. And then it may have some privacy elements to it as well, that I just only want to talk to that admin person or that teacher. So, I was just wondering, because I've been in like three meetings, and there'll always been a board member presence where they gave feedback and administered the meeting, and that could be viewed as kind of like [BLEEP] factor as well. You know, to the parent. That's just giving you the feel, how a parent feel when they walk in a meeting, and there's a board member there, and they have something they want to discuss with the admin person. So, since I know that's not protocol, uh, I won't allow that any further if I didn't, I wasn't aware, or if I did not, um, if I did not offer or call the board member to come in and sit here. I didn't get a chance to get to my second question. Is, should I wait for my other two minutes?
So, no, we're not going to worry about minutes at this point, because I think it's very important in open, in the open session to address your concerns. So, I just want to go back a little bit as to the question or the statement you had just made.
Okay.
So, one, it's not protocol.
Right.
For two, it was seeking clarity. So, the, the, the meeting, and particularly you had requested the meeting with our superintendent.
Uh-huh.
She's our one employee.
Okay.
Okay, so the board member was present, which I was present, because I was here at the last board meeting when you made your comments. So, because I was present at that meeting, and I, and I actually told you that I will seek continuation of the conversation, that's why I was present at that meeting. But ordinarily, no, a board member is not protocol to sit in a meeting with an admin staff and a parent when they have an issue. Again, we will follow proper protocol, and we will go through the superintendent.
Okay, my second question really quickly. I know I ran out of time. I just kind of want to give the board some feedback. We, uh, did have a P T S O meeting the day after the town hall meeting, and, uh, there was, uh, you know, some admin people there, some teachers there, and, um, you know, of course, parents, some of the same parents that attended the town hall meeting, and, um, and basically, uh, everyone in there, a majority of the group, you know, wanted to keep P T S O. Not that we're against P T A. You know, it's just that we wanted to keep P T S O because it's established already. Uh, it was, uh, we were told in a meeting before that the board was going to seek to, uh, support the P T S O since it was already established. And, you know, uh, all the, the parents that's involved that actually comes, we would like to keep the P T S O because people worked hard to establish it. We already had a vote, picked the board, and, uh, it's gotten kind of confusing with, uh, whether we want P T A or P T S O. And I just think if we take that same energy that we put into that town hall meeting, I think, uh, we got blasted on robo-call. Uh, it was on class dojo. It was even placed on the marquee. I just think if we do that for P T S O and give it a chance to thrive, I think that we really could boost the membership, and we really can do some things. You know, also seventy percent of schools currently use P T S O because it does gives the parents a little bit more freedom than P T, than a P T A. So, you know, for that reasons, any of the parents that is listening, that is our plight. And all of the parents that came, I'm not speaking for all of them, but from the synopsis of what we got in the meeting, that was the feedback, that people was confused with the town hall meeting. They wasn't sure, you know, which way we were going to go, and it's hard to get members. So, if we want to try to ramp this up and make it where it's conducive for the children, you know, we want to push one agenda. And I know you guys got that set on here to, uh, talk about, but if we could just wrap this up, this has been about three board meetings that this has been dragged along, and I'm hoping that we can put it to the end, but just get behind something. You know, the parents have spoken, and that's what they want. I think anybody can tell from the nature of the meeting that, you know, parents wasn't so, you know, thrilled about P T A, especially with somebody coming in and speaking to us on, uh, a screen. We could have went to YouTube and got that information. We didn't feel important when you get somebody on the screen talking to us, and they don't have a group in West Cook at all in our neighborhoods. The closest one was Schaumburg, I believe the lady said, that there was a P T A. Um, it's not just about the cost, but we don't, I don't think any parent should pay anything to volunteer their time. My personal opinion, I think most parents agree with me that's involved that came to vote. So, that's just what I wanted to say to the board. You know, uh, we're willing to support whatever you guys want to do, and we want to help, you know, instead of complain. So, we just want to, uh, just get behind something and help out, you know, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
Thanks for letting me go.
Uh, yes, before you leave, I just had one comment on that. And that was regarding a board member being present at the time of an interview with a parent or so forth.
Hmm.
The reason here recently was due to the fact that the conflicts that had arose from that and conflicting stories about those events.
Hmm.
That was why with the board having one employee who is Dr. Jackson,
Hmm.
we felt a need for someone to sit in on that particular meeting. So, then there was no he say, she say.
Okay.
So, if there are extraordinary circumstances that come up, yes, there will be situations where the board will sit in on something, especially if there's gotten to a point where there's hostility or going back and forth.
Okay.
We're only trying to protect our brand. It's nothing against any parents or anything like that, but when you've got a difference of opinion and getting different stories, it's up to us to protect the school, our brand, and even the parents and students.
Okay, but my only feedback with that is, um, it is still, that's determined how. If there's, if you, if you all feel like it's hostility, or if you feel like, uh, uh, the parent is challenging something, because there's a difference.
Wait, let me answer that.
Okay.
Okay. It was brought to me.
Hmm.
It was your wife reached out to me about something that she had heard that was taking place.
Hmm.
Therefore, that brought the board into it.
Okay.
And when there was conversations regarding what had transpired during another meeting, there was a back and forth. It was like two totally different stories.
Hmm.
So, therefore, in something like that nature where she is our one employee,
Hmm.
that is where the board would seek counsel and try to get things resolved.
And that's fine, but, um, I believe that the protocol should be that if you guys are going to involve yourself, it should be everybody. It shouldn't be one or two particular board members. I don't think that that's conducive because it's easy for me and the parents to call, say, uh, President Hannah or Mr. Buchanan and say, hey, give them my side of the story, then ask them to sit in on the meeting. I think you all should make decisions as a group, and, um, that's the way, you know, there was the intention of this. And if it's one or two, it makes it like those one or two are speaking for all seven. So, that's just my disconnect with it. I just don't want it to be the narrative of one or two, and the whole board, um, you know, did not hear, because in the me, uh, meeting that I did have that you spoke, uh, Madam Vice President, that you spoke about that you was in with me. You know, I was told that meeting was going to be recorded and played for the whole board, but I, I don't know if it was or not. I can't say. But, uh, that was the only reason why my wife and myself agreed to a recording, and we were okay with you all administering the meeting, because we thought it would be shared with everybody to get an opinion from all of the board members about what we're saying. So, I'm just looking for clarity and what's right and what's not right. I don't want them to speak if I don't know. If that is a part of the policy, I get what you're saying, Ms. Griffin, that, you know, if, uh, it's something that's important, or you can feel like it's, but I just want to make sure that it's not being done selectively.
No, the full board is made up, aware of everything that goes on here. The full board is aware of everything.
Okay, you know, and that was the nature of it.
Okay, and thank you. We do take what you say to heart.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
I just, uh, this is board member Tanya Taylor. I just want to be transparent and clear. Everything we do as a board, even though it's seven of us, it's, it's seven voices, but we're on one accord. And that video, not the video, the recording was shared amongst the group. We, we actually had a discussion on it. I just want to be clear. I'm going to apologize, um, for the school. If the communication of surrounding P T A and P T S O was confusing, we apologize. As a community member, as a parent who kid went to this school, things happen, and I'm going to apologize for that. What I do want to say is, we all are here for one reason. That's to get these reading and math scores up to proficiency, so the state looks. That's to get these reading and math scores up to proficiency. So the state looks at us and our report card looks really good. We want our students to thrive. We're all here for the same reason, nothing less, nothing more. It's just an acronym. It's a P T A and a P T S O, and the S is just with the student involvement, but the student's gonna be involved anyway. So going forward tonight, I just wanna be clear, I wanna be transparent that the board has discussed this numerous times. Battled with it as to understand the whys. And the most important why is the, for the transition, if that's gonna happen from P T A, from P T S O to P T A is because what the state, what we can benefit from it is leading us to potentially be a blue ribbon school. It will help us get to that next step. That is one of our most concerned reasons. We're trying to get these scores up. We're trying to bridge the communication from our community to our school. And regardless if we had, if we have, no, regardless, we have a P T S O. The board, the school, the community supports it. We always will and we always did. However, things are changing. So we're trying to change with time. P T A offers a few more added benefits that can help our student population. The prime reason is getting our scores up. We want to maintain a A report card. And with this dream and this goal and the initiative, it covers that. So if we have members that are here, that's present or in a community that is a part of P T S O. Transition is evolution. You just move over. It's just an acronym because we're here as one thing to get the scores up, to get our test scores up. That's what we're looking at. I understand that they're two different organizations. They thrive and they have two different initiatives, but we're looking at what's best, not only for the school, but for the children of this school and the community. We're being very transparent about it. I do understand your concerns. We've been going back and forth about this for the last three, maybe three board meetings. We didn't have a town hall about it. It was a little confusion there. Again, the board apologized, we sorry, that was not our intentions whatsoever. But we have to think about this. We have to put the students of this school and our community first. So if there was elections held, if it was, there were elections held for the P T S O. And I am a true believer and I believe everybody in this room will feel the same. Those people would just rerun again, if possible, if that's what they choosing. And I'm sure if you was elected under P T S O, you will be elected under P T A. It's that simple to the board. We're being very transparent. We talked about this and we kinda beating a dead horse right now. I hope all lines are clear. I hope all our hearts are in it, but again, it's an acronym. And we have to think about what's best for the children of this community and this district. And again, the most important thing for us, for the board as one of our goals to our superintendent is to get these scores up. And we are on that journey as we speak. Thank you.
Okay, hold on, hold on, one moment, one moment. Actually, board, we, we kinda getting away because public comment isn't meant to be back and forth.
Understood.
We could talk about it more in the agenda item, but what we don't wanna do is
Right, understood at this point, but I, I just felt a need to clarify it. Um, it's been, we've been going back and forth about this several times. Not that the conversation is closed, it's not. We are open ears here and open hearts. But at this point, we're not gonna go back and forth about it. Um, if you want to have further conversation, what I'm gonna request is that you email our superintendent. If you don't feel comfortable going that route, the chain of command, you could speak with our, um, our, uh, principal as well. Um, again, the board is seven of us. We all have several different voices, but we are on one accord. We are taking this situ- situation very seriously, not lightly at all.
Mr. Patterson.
Can you come back up to the mic, please?
Vice President, we're going to be
Just, just one more time because
That was stated, uh, by you, uh, Vice President, that, uh, we established before that P T A has nothing to do with our blue ribbon status. Uh, we already did the research on that, that's not factual. Uh, it doesn't have anything to do with it, most behalf of the organization here that's doing things for the kids. So that's not factual about that. And then also too, you know, when you made the statement about, uh, uh, P T S O and P T A, I just feel like it should be the parents' decision. Several board members have already stated that, you know, that you all, it's not your decision to make. It's the parents' decision and that was some of the feedback that we got in our P T S O meeting. You know, I wish you could have been there and, uh, other people that have kids, you would have heard the parents. Uh, when their desire is that, that's the parents' decision, not the board, not the superintendent or anybody else. That should be left up to a vote with the parents in the platform that's provided to them, which is P T S O right now. And we could have a vote on whether if we want to do it or not. I don't think that the board should intervene or have the jurisdiction to intervene and say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. Because it's P T S O and P T A either way for a reason. So it's for the parents to make that decision and those ladies that you all brought from P T A, they made that clear. When they were speaking, that it was up to the parents. No other governing body, nobody else makes that decision. Nobody, and then when you use the term rebrand to, uh, P T A. Uh, if you're gonna dissolve another one, that's not a rebrand. That's getting rid of something and bringing in something new. And if the parents feel like that's not needed, that's who is, who the taxpayers, that's who you all are here to serve. That's who the superintendent is here to serve. And we also argue our constituents as well. We're the people that vote for you, sign your petitions, do all this stuff to support you guys. Almost everybody up here I voted for. So if, if, and when I was giving out my vote and they were going around speaking, I was told if I had an issue and it's not me asking for a favor, this is right or wrong. And I was promised that I would be heard and the rest of your constituents, we should go off how they feel. Not how the board feels, not how the superintendent feels. It should be strictly how the parents feel. And because of, of the, the nature of that meeting, you know, like Vice President, you got up and you was a little out of line when you stood up and you said, I'm gonna pay, we're gonna, the board is gonna pay for everybody and let's have a vote right now. That was an informational meeting. That was not a meeting, that was not an election. We was just there to get information about P T A, but then you stood up and kinda drew a line in the sand and decided that, hey, we're supporting P T A or so many words and you wanted to have a vote right then. That wasn't the right thing to do because that wasn't the platform for that. So I just feel like, you know, you all have big voices and you guys have people to support you. And you come out and draw a line in the sand and say, this is what you want. That's kinda influencing people, you know, to do it. And if that's not what the parents want, I don't think that as a board member, you all should be advocating for something. You should be listening to the parents. So that's just my only feedback about that. It's our decision. You know, so thanks.
Okay, one last time, let me clarify a few things. As a board member, uh, or as a board, um, I did not draw a line in the sand. That was a town hall. Okay, that's your opinion and I have mine, but let me get my point across. I did not draw a line in the sand. At that town hall, it was being discussed and the meeting was getting heated by the community. And by the community, the meeting was getting heated, okay? So when we talked about a fee, we were speaking of a fee of five dollars for the parents to pay. I, I, what I said was that maybe the board can decide if there is a fund balance that we can draw out the five dollars per parent. And then I also said, if I have to pay the five dollars, I would pay it. It wasn't politics, it wasn't political. Believe me, my heart is in it. Only thing I wanna see is the advancement of the students in this community. And again, it's in regards to our reading the math scores. The second part of your, um, question that you asked, you, you, you keep insinuating as it's, uh, seven, it's seven board members, but again, I wanna clarify, it's one voice, it's one commitment and it's one drive. We're very transparent. Anything we can do for the students here of this community, we will do. That, that, that's, that's our goal. And again, wait, one more que- one more thing, cause I let you speak, so please give me, you know, that as well. One more thing, again. It doesn't matter if we go from P T S O to P T A, again, it's an acronym. Now, if I was wrong for misspeaking to say that P T A would give us a better green light to get to that blue ribbon status, my apologies, my apologies. But we can all take the time out right now to Google it and it's pretty much apples to apples and oranges to oranges. We have one employee, which is our superintendent. What our employee does is make a recommendation to the board by letting us know what's best for the community and the students of this community. Okay, that was held. She has given us what we needed to make a decision. Tonight, the decision would be voted upon. It was not the board saying that we want A or B. That was not us, that wasn't our intention. What we did, sir, Mr. Patterson. We listened to our one employee who gave us the background information. And it would be up to each board member if they agree to that or, or not. And that will happen on tonight. So I do, I apologize for hardly, it was not my intentions to draw any sand and, and a line in the sand at all. Again, my child went here, I pay taxes here as well. Everybody in, in this seat sitting here probably paid taxes for Broadview, so that's not an issue. But I believe at heart, we all have one goal and we want our children of this community to thrive. That is it, that is all. I'm sorry if I misspoke, that was not my intentions. I hope that the meeting did not come off hostile and me playing a part in that because it's not politics. Okay?
All right, Mr. Patterson, Mr. Patterson, we got the board.
Speak, right? I know you guys gave me all concern with it. Mr. Dawson said we should go back and forth, but says she
Go ahead.
That's what I'm saying. So again, P T A has nothing to do with our test scores. So when, when you say, oh, we have a P T A, it's gonna help us this and this. Again, the parents spoke at the, uh, town hall meeting and then the day after, we had a P T S O meeting. And like I said, that we did not have a bunch of board members there, any board members as a matter of fact. And the parent made, parents made it clear what they wanted to do. I get what you're saying about is Dr. Jackson's job to recommend to you all. But I just don't, it's not protocol or for Dr. Jackson, she can ask the parents. And then we take a vote on P T A or P T S O. Not go to the board and you all make a decision because it's not the board's decision, cause we're a separate entity. It's not the board's decision to say, we're voting on whether we're gonna have P T S O or P T A tonight. That, that's not, it's the parents' decision. And the people that she brought here, the P T A, that spoke on the screen. They said the same thing, that it's not up to a board or superintendent or anything in order for that to happen. That, that, that's just my point that I'm making. It's not a board decision. Because you all can't even dissolve the P T S O because you guys are filed the E I N, it's this whole separate entity. You guys can't just do away with something that you don't have the jurisdiction to do that. And that's all that I'm saying. It's a lot of layers to this before we just say, oh, it's just an acronym. It's gonna help us with our test scores. P T A has never helped anybody with their test scores. It's about the curriculum and what's expected, what you all have to, for the superintendent to pass down to the teachers to teach the children. And that's what affects test scores and parental involvement and all that stuff. Not with whether we have a P T A or a P T S O, that's not factual. And when you say that on a big stage like you have in a mic that's loud, it sounds like, that's misleading to the parents. To say that P T A affects the test scores, that's not true. And anything that P T S O or P T O does, you know, it, there's not many things that P T A, uh, can do that P T, that P T O can't do. I mean, for our one school, school district, we want the most control as parents as we can have, which is what we deserve. And again, seventy percent of schools use P T O. I mean, so I just don't understand why we're fighting the facts. If seventy percent of other schools feel this way and use, adopt this. Why is it that we're gonna do something different? You know, I'm not coming up with this alone and trying to go back and forth with you. I'm just stating some of the facts. And, uh, just letting you know that if we put the same energy like have we been putting into P T A. I guarantee you that we can get accomplished, whatever it is the board or superintendent wants. We can do that. You know, that, that's the only thing that I'm saying, is that, you know, it should be left up to the parents. That's what the parents said in our P T S O meeting and that's what they were saying in the P T A town hall meeting. So I would just respectfully ask you all to listen to the parents, let it be their decision. You know, and, and, you know, again, we're the people that support you. I know you guys have one employee. But you have a bunch of constituents that vote you in. It's our concern that needs to be listened to. We've been pushed off the stage and it's about your one employee. It should be about what the parents feel. It should not be about what the board feel and your decision to make. So that's the statement that I'm making and I'm standing behind. It should be, that's what I'm getting back from the parents. Everybody's saying the same thing that come and that's involved. Not just, cause it's impossible for us to get every parent vote. They, they don't come out because they're confused about what's going on. This is the feedback. And had one of you all came to the P T S O meeting, like everybody was at the P T A meeting, town hall meeting. I think you guys could have heard the parents and heard how they felt. So you know, that, that's, that's what I'm saying. I don't wanna, I've already taken up a lot of time, but that, that's my feedback today.
Thank you for your concerns.
All right, we have another public comment. Mayor Thompson?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Dr. Jackson, the Board of Education, Community. So I know, just sitting here briefly, um, listening to this conversation as it relates to what's the differences between P T S O, P T A or P T O. I'm a taxpayer here. I don't have any kids here. Um, the last one graduated in two years ago. And one thing I will say is that the decisions that the one employee makes to the Board of Education, they hire them to inform me. And I support the decisions that Dr. Jackson made on behalf of this Board of Education and me as a taxpayer. I own two properties in the village of Broadview. And I also serve as the mayor in this district. And the results that I've seen in the last six years, this school has transformed as it relates to academics. Our number one focus should be the students, not what organizations they're gonna participate in, but what is best for the students. I don't know if you all looked at the Illinois School Report Card, but this district was the only one that excelled in the test scores over this past year out of every school in Provisal Township. So for that, they deserve a round of applause. They are doing the work intentionally. They are here and everyone that's sitting on this board, I've supported. I supported this school because I believe in the initiative to get our school to go to the next level. The next level is blue ribbon status. Yes, should the parents be involved? Yes, do they get to make the decisions on day-to-day operations? No. That's between the Board of Education and the one employee that they do have. So the decision that you all vote on tonight, vote your conscience. But do what's right for the students that attend this school, not based off emotions and not based off of feelings. We need to look at the facts, we need to vote our conscience and we need to do what's right by these taxpayers because you all asked us for more money so that we can elevate the school. I can tell you this and this is a fact. This is a fact. Out of all the elected officials that have served in this village as the mayor of Broadview. I am the only one that give money to this district every year at the beginning of the school year. I find three school, three classrooms. I have not seen a parent say, you know, let us give twenty-five dollars to help do this or offset the cost. We run a fundraiser so that we can raise the funds to do what's best for the students. What's best for the students is making sure they're able to read, write, math, still. And what's best for this district. You all have to do some phenomenal kids in this district. Four of them went to Atlanta with me this week to represent the village of Broadview. From this village. Those students, every year that graduate, that's fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, most of them come out of Lindup. They work in the village, in every department. Our fire department, our police department, our water department, our public works, the mayor's office, the building department. We are setting the standards, and we are setting the tone in the village of Broadview. That's why we are Broadview Strong, and this is Lindup Strong. And every member on this board, believe it or not, I am paying attention. Because I do know for a fact that many people wanna, you'll see, I do know that. And sometimes when we get into contentious and battles and stuff like this, it's posturing for the next election. But I'm paying attention. I need you all to vote your conscience, do what's right for the students. Not come here to grab your lunch and your dinner, and not show up, or just show up for dinners, or have your dinners dropped off at your house. Show up and do the intentional work that these students need and deserve, and support the leadership. You have your leader, she has an administrative staff that's watching the behavior and the culture. And most importantly, guess what that do? Trickle down into the classroom, to the teachers, gotta deal with everything that we don't have to deal with. We got kids that come into this establishment that have issues every single day. We don't know what goes on behind those closed doors. But it's our responsibility that we nurture them, we show them love and kindness. We not up here arguing about an association because we want the control and power of the school. The taxpayers control the school, the taxpayers. And if I gotta get every resident up in here to talk about a PTSO with our tax dollars, I will. I will, because it's our tax dollars. I don't have a kid here, but I show up. I show up. When I'm invited to this school, I show up. I show up for basketball games, I show up for volleyball games, I show up for the cheerleaders, I show up. When a teacher call and say they need, a teacher called me, or texted me and said, it's a pothole, something with the parking lot, or something like that. Guess what we did? We fixed it immediately, because the teachers deserve to come to this place ready to work, and ready to produce the results that this Board of Education is putting in place. So I wanna say I thank you all for showing up, showing up, doing the intentional work, being the leaders that we all elected you to do. And Mr. Patterson, we say thank you for signing those petitions. But at the same time, you could have gotten a raise at the same time, too, and it's not too late. So, do your jobs, handle it, be professional, and vote your conscience. But the first thing you need to do is what's best for the students. Not what's best for the mayor, not what's best for Dr. Jackson, not what's best for the parents, but what's best for the student. Because they show up here every day looking to be loved, to be treated with kindness, to be treated with love, respect, dignity, and honor. You all have a tough job to do, and it is a lot of hard decisions that you do have to make. But at the end of the day, it's about can our kids compete at a state, county, local, federal level? And I took four kids with me, with me this past week to Atlanta. They was with me for five days, and they performed. Everybody know who are Lindup kids in Atlanta, on a national level. They know that, because I was getting the compliments when they was in their youth delegate forms. Mayor Thompson, those are your kids from your community? Yes, sir. Intentional work, you guys set the tone. And now these kids are sophomores and juniors in high school. This board has set the tone for excellence under the leadership of Dr. Jackson and her phenomenal administration team. So keep doing the work, be intentional, don't pay attention to the distractions. Because sometimes we get distracted, and we don't make informed decisions. This is about getting the job done, so our kids can compete on a global level. It's time for Broadview and our students to go to the next level, and I'm ready for it all, and I'm paying attention, so thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, um, next, we have our FOIA requests, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, good evening, Board of Education, Community, and Staff Members. We did have one FOIA request, um, and that FOIA request has been satisfied.
Thank you. Upcoming events and correspondence, Madam Secretary?
Um, I have none.
Thank you. Upcoming events, you guys, please read on your own, they are listed in front of you on tonight's packet. Next, we have the Consider Agenda. The first one, I make a motion that the board approves the regular open session meeting minutes for Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. The regular closed session meeting minutes for Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. The regular open session meeting minutes for Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The regular closed session meeting minutes for Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The Lindup District Ninety-two accounts payable for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, through November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. The Lindup District Ninety-two Activity Account Reconciliation for October twenty twenty-three, and the Lindup District Ninety-two Payroll for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, through November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of five hundred and four thousand, seventy-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Can I have a second, please?
Tanya Taylor, second.
Madam Secretary, go, please.
Board President Hannah.
Yay.
Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Buchanan.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Morris, absent, Board Member Williams, Wilford.
Thank you.
Most can read, yeah.
Oh, uh, moving right on to old business, presentation of the State of the District.
Good evening, Board Members, Community Members, Teachers and Staff, thank you so much for being here. So today, what I'm going to be talking about is student achievement and curriculum. So if you look here, um, last time when I presented, I was presenting this in terms of the preliminary scores. And so now we have received our scores. So if you look at did not yet meet expectations, that is the way we want our stairs to go. We want to reduce the number of students that we have in did not meet, as, as well as partially met expectations, so the stairs are dropping. Approach expectations, we almost leveled off, but if you look at meeting expectations, and this is for reading. So meeting expectations, the staircase is going up, and this is what we want to see. We wanna make sure that our students are developing each and every day, and we're closing that achievement gap. We're still working on in terms of exceeding expectations. However, we, as you can see here, we did have students that exceeded expectations, and that was for reading. When we move into mathematics, same thing, we're looking at the staircase. The whole goal is to reduce the number of students that you have in the did not meet expectations. If we look at partially met, again, the staircase is going down, so that means we're moving our students to the next level. We're going up, and in terms of approaching expectations, now mathematics, in terms of meeting expectation, we did fall short in terms of last, uh, the year before and last year, we did fall short in mathematics. However, thank you to the board, we did get a new math curriculum, so we should see those stairs, those staircase going up in the right direction. Any questions so far regarding the math IAR and the reading IAR? All right, thank you. So, as, um, the mayor stated, we are doing wonderful things here, and this is just an excerpt from the Village Press in terms of what we are doing here at Lindup. We were a commendable school, so we are commendable, so congratulations to Lindup for being commendable. And that's with the board's help in terms of making sure that the teachers have what they need each and every day in order to make sure that those prescriptions, we're following the prescriptions, and we're differentiating instruction for each child. As you saw with fifth grade, when I'm having those parent meetings, we are looking at the scores. Most of the students were above, above state average in writing. That goes back to the race rubric in terms of what they were taught. And I keep telling the parents, even though they may not be in fifth grade, they still need to use the same strategies that they learn in order to help them, because it's working. So I wanted to say that. Now, when we look at our map scores, so this is map, um, IAR, and this is what we took within four to six weeks of attendance here at Lindup. Now, if you look at this, pre-K, we have, I mean kindergarten, we have thirty students. We have twenty-four at the pre-K level. We have six students that are proficient. This is a baseline, this is a baseline, again, so this is what we look at in order to see in winter, do they grow and so forth. However, what you're seeing here is that we need to call to, a call of action. We need to work hard, because what are we doing with those students in terms of that pre-K level? Reading is fundamental, and therefore, we're putting all of our energy into the reading curriculum to make sure that those students are moving, those twenty-four students, we need to move them over into the proficiency level. Those six students, we would like to see them move up, we don't want anyone going back down. Nonetheless, this is the course of action, and this is what the board has asked us to do in terms of their goal, the prescriptions. Having the prescriptions is what's helping us. We started this last year with eighth grade, and we were able to move it. The board asked us to make sure that every single grade level gets the same thing that eighth grade got last year, and this is what we are trying to do. If we look at eighth grade, there are students right now that are proficient at the second grade level, the second grade level. How are we gonna move those students? We're moving them based on the prescriptions, we're moving them on differentiating instruction, we're moving them on parent meeting, and letting the parents know about the data. We are sharing the data with the parents, and we're going over the data with the parents, so that they understand. School ends at three-thirty, we can't do it all here at the school. We need the parents' help in order to close that achievement gap. When we look at mathematics, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
On that particular slide right there, you're referring, this slide refers to all of our students that's not at proficiency level, am I correct?
And, and proficiency, so if you look, so what happens is that MAP gives a projected proficiency. And so what happens is, you have to score a level four or a level five on the IAR in order to be proficient. So we look at their scores based on level four. So when we look at those scores, when the test was taken in the fall, if you look at eighth grade, for instance, we had one student at the second grade level. We had eight students, excuse me, six students who are proficient at the eighth grade level. So there's a big wide gap. So the goal is to make sure that we are honing in our, our prescriptions and differentiating instruction to move that child, whoever that child is at the second grade level, our goal is to move them so that they become closer to proficiency, the same way we did last year, where we are able to move those students. Is the same thing that we're doing this year in terms of the writing the prescriptions, differentiating instruction, and making sure that each teacher knows exactly what that individual child needs. Yes?
So just to make sure I'm understanding this data correctly.
Yes.
When it relates to our eighth graders.
Yes.
We have one eighth grader that is reading at the first grade level.
That is proficient at the second grade level, not first, second.
Is that the second column? Okay, and so, at what point does an eighth grader, um, I know you, okay, I'm sorry, from the angle of you. Can you turn that board a little this way, because it's, thank you. And so, at what point does an eighth, I imagine that these students that's at the second grade, third grade level, when they're eighth graders, are engaging in the MTSS process?
Yes, yes.
And so, at what point does the school district, like, how many weeks of data is taken prior to these children get additional support? And I guess my question is, for Lindup, how many grade levels does an eighth grader have to be behind prior to them receiving their IEP? Because if a eighth grader is reading at a second and third grade level, like, you're four, five grade levels behind.
So, just because a child is reading at the second grade level, doesn't mean they need an IEP. So it could be other factors as to why they are where they are. So, so we don't have a, a specific number, I don't think, I can ask Ms. Kiefer, but I don't think we have a specific number where we, um, we were, so what, let me tell you, as a teacher, what we do is, we differentiate instruction, we make sure that we're following the MTSS standards in terms of making sure we're providing interventions for those children. We provide interventions for a certain number of weeks. If those interventions are not working, that's when we bring them to the team and say, you know what, we've done X, Y, and Z, the child is still not moving, how can we help this child? That's when we bring the child up. So it's not that we just look at it off these base scores, we are doing things in the classroom in terms of intervening. If those interventions don't work, then we refer them to, um, Ms. Kiefer in the Special Education Department. But we have to make sure that we are doing interventions, because she's gonna ask, what interventions? What modifications have you done? What have you done for this child? Because you can't just bring the child to me based on one data point and say this child needs an IEP.
Right, I totally agree with you.
Yes.
But my question to you is, how many weeks, how many weeks does the student at Lindup go through the MTSS process prior to, after you've done all those interventions, like you said, X number of weeks, six weeks, you collected data, you go back, parents' involvement, all of that? At what point does the child move towards an IEP? Because if you're five grade levels behind, I mean, at what point in your MTSS process? Is it six weeks, is it twelve weeks worth of data, and then they go to the next step? Because you've exhausted all interventions and strategies, and the child achieved no success? At what point does the child move towards additional individualized instruction?
I will let Ms. Kiefer cover that, however, there are students with IEPs in our data as well, okay?
And so, just to add, good evening, Board of Education, uh, just to add, so our students are tiered, um, in three different tiers for MTSS. So it really just depends on what tier they are, um, they get eight, about eight weeks before we re, um, we come back to the table using our, our interventionist, our teacher data, our map data. And, um, and then we determine do, uh, what strategy. So while they're in MTSS, we're, we're figuring out what strategies, what supports the student actually needs, so we can bring it back to tier-one instruction. Something I just wanna emphasize is that these scores do, uh, show our students with IEPs as well. So they may have an IEP and at the second grade level. So we use our IEPs to, um, the IEP goals to try to bridge that gap in addition to the prescription. So although our students with IEPs, we don't, um, we don't necessarily look at them as tiers, but we still give them that additional support, so they get a, an additional dose of that, um, support that they need. So I, I can't say off top which students, um, that's listed here already has an IEP, but we do, um, make sure that we're exhausting everything we can, because we don't wanna our, over-identify our students before giving those supports. Um, when we've had a pretty good success rate as far as our students going through the MTSS process and learning those strategies that they need to take back to the classroom. Um, but the ones that need to be referred, we absolutely do, um, move forward with the process, we look at the data, we, we, we don't just use the one, um, map. We do try to triangulate the data to make informed decisions.
I'm sorry, that was one of the questions that I've consistently asked when, um, we have data to identify which students are IEP students.
Oh, yeah, we know, we do know, we do know the students, it's just.
The, it doesn't help if they know, we don't know, we're looking at the data, like, the data should be identified for us as well.
Ms. Lawrence is looking that up now, we'll have it for you in a moment.
Okay.
So again, this is the baseline data, and this is what we use, um, in terms of seeing where the students are in terms of the summer slide and everything, so this is the baseline data. Any other questions?
No.
Brian Dawson, I have. Mr. Dawson, go ahead.
Um, do we have a I, I almost kinda, um, hate to even say it, but is there a level at which we decide to hold a student back? If they are reading at a second grade level and doing math at a second grade level? It was, it was spoken earlier that Lindup students are gonna go on, they're gonna go on to Proviso East, Proviso West, PMSA, the other schools. And if we were to send a child in eighth grade, who's, let's say that they progress a bit, and they get to third level, third grade or fourth grade proficiency, but then we move them on to high school, you know, even though we've tried to give them that, um, everything that we could possibly do to get them to the next level. Is there a point where we need to consider they're not ready or not?
So based on the baseline data, or you're talking about at the end in, in May?
Yeah, I'm saying, like, looking at this, I do believe that the team with the prescription can move a child forward. And I think that you could, you know, you may even get a. And I think that you could, you know, you may even get a full grade level, maybe even two. And so if you have a child in eighth grade who by the end of this year gets two grade levels, which is a spectacular achievement and speaks to the teaching ability. Even if they're still only at fourth or fifth grade level, what is that cause to say, you know, this is a student who will benefit from staying on and then getting another two levels up? And that, that's just a question. I don't know.
So that would be a case by case scenario.
I guess what I'm saying is.
Yes. So we have in, in Lindop, in my career here, we have held back students. So it's not that we haven't, we have held back students. So, but it's on a case by case level. Yes.
And the reason, I just, I know that also, that also can have like an emotional effect on the child. And you know, you have other things, but. The data is, is the data. So I just wanted to ask that before you went forward.
Okay. Let me just add, and so last year, when we first began that and, and the board directed us to make sure that some things happened, we saw ninety five percent growth just with the board giving us the latitude and the support to say, go ahead and do what you have to do. Now, I was not a good thing because we had a lot of turnover. In fact, you all know, we lost probably about eighteen teachers. And so our staff is new, but we have exactly what we need. The other thing that we'll be doing is bringing that to the policy committee to talk about that as well after we've done some more research. So Mr. Dawson and Mrs. Wolfert, thank you so much for asking those questions. But we will be bringing that to policy because something has got to change. We cannot just keep passing children on. And I understand about the S E L part. We've been also talking about doing some things for the summer and some intensive things with our children for the summer and especially those who are reading below level, at least two or three grade levels. We need to do that immediately, but we need everyone's support and we need to have, uh, the buy-in so that the children are present to receive, um, the material and the further direction and instruction. So thank you for those questions. We will be bringing that to policy.
Thank you. Is Ms. Lyons ready? Not yet. All right, so I'll move on. All right, so here, what we did, and thank you Board of Education for purchasing our new iReady Math curriculum. So what we did here is we were showing you within, um, the projection in terms of what students, based on the baseline data. So in terms of exceeds, it's, it's projected that no students will proceed, will exceed. However, what happens is that that's going to change, number one, with prescriptions. Number two, usually what happens in the projections, they're higher than what our students actually, how they actually perform on the Illinois Assessment for Readiness. So if you look here, uh, meets eight percent, uh, approaching twenty eight percent, partially beating forty one percent and did not meet, or level one would be twenty three percent when we're looking at the map. And then you can see how it correlates to iReady, which is the new curriculum that was purchased. The difference between the MAP score and the iReady is iReady not only gives you the diagnostic, but they give us the curriculum in order to work with the students and in order to close that achievement gap, especially in mathematics. Questions? Okay. So when we move on to parent partnerships. So I am pleased to say that I have met with every single grade eight parent, grade seven parent, and grade six parent. Thank you. I'm going to continue. I, I, I'm now making appointments for grade five students, but let me just tell you about those meetings. Those meetings opened the eyes and they gave the parents ammunition in terms of going to speak to their teachers. Sometimes teacher, uh, parents are reluctant to speak to teachers because they don't know what they don't know. So I was able to break down exactly what the child's test scores were. If they're in math for grade five, they did take, I'm sorry, if they're in grade five, they did take the science assessment last year. I was able to break down the science assessment, the Illinois Assessment for Readiness, as well as our map test. So I was able to go through all the data. Apart from that, we were able to talk about attendance in terms of tardies, in terms of being chronically attend, uh, absence, chronic absenteeism. So I was able to ask them, what are the barriers? I, I've called every single parent, apart from the parents I met with in terms of those students that have more than six absences, to find out what are the barriers. Right now, as we speak, every morning at seven fifty, I have an alarm where I call a parent because they work nights to make sure that they're up so that they can bring their child to school. I've also purchased alarm clocks for students so that they can wake up and come to school. So what I'm doing is trying to partner, trying to participate in partnership with the parents so that we close the gap and we make sure that all the students are here each and every day. And we're gonna go into this more because if the children aren't here learning, how can we close the achievement gap? How can those prescriptions work if the children are not here? So I'm asking the parents, what are the barriers? How can we help your child be at school every single day as well as tardies, reducing the amount of tardies every single day? We've done some things and we're gonna go through it in terms of helping students feel welcomed when they come in. Because what happens is sometimes they don't wanna come to school because they're tardy and they're like, oh, my God, my teacher's gonna fuss at me. No, we're opening our arms, welcoming them, giving them, uh, to-go breakfast. Like, thank you so much for being here. We're so happy you're here. Go to class, make it a great day. So we want them to be here. We're trying to set the tone and the atmosphere, starting in the office by welcoming them and smiling. It doesn't matter what time you come in, we're just so happy that you're here. So the parent meetings have been phenomenal. I'm gonna be starting, uh, next Thursday in terms of grade five. And then moving on, my goal is to get to every single parent in the school and going over that data and making sure that we have a partnership. So this is something new. Because last year, Dr. Jackson was doing it and she did it with eighth grade. So this is something new for the parents in terms of meeting, the principal meeting with every single parent to discuss their child and taking the time out, how can we help you? What do you need from us in order to help you help your child? So that's something that we're doing and I'm very happy about that.
Before we move on, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right.
Wait, 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 go ahead.
Okay.
That's a great way to think out the box. An alarm clock.
Yes.
That's a tier two intervention. Some people need it.
Yes.
If that's what you need to get up, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes. I even offered to put a child in my car, but I can't do that. So it was, yeah, I can't do that, but it was like, whatever I need to do. It was like going back to Ms. Cannon in terms of what she used to do to help students get to school. She'll knock on your door and say, let's go, it's time for school. So let's talk about chronic absenteeism. Dr. Robertson?
Good evening, Board of Education, community members. I'm delighted to talk to you about our attendance facts. Um, you'll see here, there's a link here to a video that offers some wonderful, uh, feedback about, about what is offered for attendance. We have been making some adjustments and changes in Lindup that we are excited about.
Before she moves on, sorry. I wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you to Ms. Wolfert for, um, supplying us with attendance works, making sure our superintendent got to us with that information because that is what has helped us as well in terms of reducing the amount of absence as well as tardy. So thank you so much for that resource. We appreciate it.
Definitely. And we'll talk about some of the things that we've implemented since we've been utilizing that website as well. Um, right here is some data from, um, our students. We have four students that have been identified as truant. These students are some preschool students that have nine or more unexcused absences. We also have forty six students who have chronic absenteeism, which is about fifteen percent, which means that they have ten percent or more days missing from school. We have addressed this by Ms. O and I calling every student that, uh, was on this list to find out what was the barriers and trying to come up with scenarios and help in order to help reduce those barriers. And she mentioned some of the things like personally calling a parent every morning, the alarm clocks, um, talking to them about if they're absent because they're sick, making sure that they obtain the work that they need to make sure there's no lack in their educational process. So we are definitely trying to do all that we can to help support our families who are in this situation. This here shows our students who have chronic absenteeism. And we have four point three percent of these students, which is our two, who have been identified as McKinney Vento. And then we have fourteen students who are affidavit students. This slide right here, talk about our.
Of the McKinney Vento students that's experiencing, this is, um, absenteeism, are these students receiving the services, transportation services from the district? And they're still absent? Okay.
Thank you so much. This here shows how it's breaking down by race as well as gender. We have thirty nine percent of our male, which is eighteen students. And that are twenty, I'm sorry, I can't see, twenty eight female students who have chronic absenteeism. And then we also have our African American students, there are twenty eight who are been identified as chronic absent, as well as sixteen, fifteen students who are Hispanic. And then there are two students who identify as two or more races. In our chronic absenteeism data, we have six students who have been identified that had an I E P. And then we have one student that has a five or four plan. There are thirty eight students who have been identified as having low income. And then we have ten students who are multilingual learners. This data here shows our chronic absenteeism by grade level. We have fourteen students who are in pre K. All our pre K students have been identified and contacted by our pre K coordinator as well as all of the other grade levels. Mrs. O and I have been contacting these parents to find out how we can address any barriers with their, um, absent rates. Some of the barriers that we have been, uh, addressing or hearing from our parents is some of them are health reasons. Um, some of them may be, um, going out of town. And so we've been talking about things that we can do to address it. Some of it is virtual instruction, um, if students need any homebound tutoring, um, home visits. Also, we're also gonna continue our contact via letters, calls, anything that we need to do in order to reach our parents. Um, also, any type of thing that we can do, we are trying to, as you stated, think outside the box and addressing these issues. Some of the things that we have been doing, so, I'm sorry. Some of the things that we have been doing is addressing tardies and absenteeism by trying to do some positive things in the school, which we'll talk about that. And here is some data about our tardies. Here, from the beginning of the school year until October thirteenth, we had eighty nine students who were tardy to school. That data has changed. And now we have one hundred and twenty four students who was identified as being tardy to school as of November ninth. We are definitely concerned about those numbers and we are doing all that we can in order to address it. We also have students who are tardy to class, that is our middle school students. We had seventeen students who was tardy to, to class and now we have identified twenty three. Of those one hundred and twenty four students who was tardies to class, thirty nine of those students had three or more tardies, I mean, to school, had three or more tardies. Of those students, we have thirty four students. We have twenty seven percent of those who had affidavits. And then nine of the middle school students had three or more tardies. Some of the things that we have been doing, when it comes to tardies to class, we have implemented a detention for the students who are tardies to class. They are already at school, they're tardy to classes for our middle school students. But we don't like to just focus on that, um, punishment type of thing. We're also doing some P B I S strategies. We just had our first tier one P B I S parties, celebrating all the students who have been coming to class every day, on time, doing all of their work. Students who did not, they had missing assignments or things of that nature, who had a holding room in which they was able to actually sit down and do their assignments. We also have a process now in place in which if there's a student who was on our chronic absentee or tardy list and they have made changes in a positive direction, we are giving that parent a congratulation note. Thank you so much for all of your hard work and getting your students on time. We wanna recognize that. We are also, um, offering our, um, doing a parent and family connect, schooling and family connection. While we did the student parent pledge in which every student in Lindop had a letter that they had to go home and speak to their parents about, in which the student side as well as the parent side committing to being to school every day on time. We had a, um, whole school assembly in which our wonderful superintendent and principal sat down and shared with them the commitment that they had in order to make sure that our whole school was committed to, uh, increasing our attendance. Um, we also had all of our staff and students sign a pledge in which we have a big, huge banner in which we're gonna display as a reminder that, of our everyday commitment. Every day on our announcements, it is made to remind our students to come to school every day on time. And these are just a little bit of the incentives that we're doing every day, embedding it into our, um, experience for our students to know that they are appreciated. We've also, Ms. O and I have talked to all of our teachers and staff members about making our school be a welcoming place. She mentioned that earlier about smiling, encouraging our kids to come to school, sharing with them that we appreciate them being here every day. If they are absent or if they're late, when they come back, we want to make sure that they know that we are joyful when they come back, that we are happy, that we are glad that they're here every day on time.
And another thing to add, uh, Dr. Robertson stated in terms of students tardy to class, three tardies in terms of a lunch detention. Those lunch detentions are discussion, those are S E L. We're, we're helping the students understand why it's important to be in class. So it's not just a detention, it's actually a small group S E L where they're, they're able to get skills. We're able to talk about it, have discussions, discussions that they normally may not have had, had they not been in that group. And so that's also helping deter the number of tardies in terms of having those discussions and being accountable. So everyone wants to be held accountable and what that means in teaching the children what it means to be accountable. And accountability is hard, but we all have to be accountable and to let them know how much, like, going over it and letting them know, how much minutes a day are you missing when you're tardy? Like, that's, for them, it's mind blowing. They're like, really? I just went to the bathroom. I'm like, yeah. Every day going to the bathroom, being tardy? So it's having those discussions with the children. So they're not just sitting in detention, we're actually counseling them while they're there with us.
And it's through those conversations that we're hoping to deter them being late to class. I mean.
I, I do have a question and comment. Uh, I noticed it was thirty percent for the pre K. And I'm wondering, I'm sure you already have some ideas of like why that is? Because since it is so formative, is it just because they're new to school? They're not getting ready on time and the parents are just like, no. Or they're going over to grandma or granddad's house because not today. It's not like, it's not something we can do, you know, to fix it, or is it?
So you're absolutely right. It's their first time to school and sometimes parents don't know the value of, the importance and the value of, um, pre K. So it's having those conversations and letting the parents know that your child has to be here. It's important. Exactly. It's not, it's not optional, it's important that your child is here every single day, even if they're four, even if they're three. So you're absolutely right. So thank you for that.
Uh, one more thing, just as far as the, the middle school kids, six through eight. I'm sure that the, the team is on top of it. But I know during COVID, a lot of us noticed that some of the middle school children were, um, caretakers for the younger kids. And so, you know, if you were teaching on a Zoom, you saw that kids in middle school were running from their Zoom to help their kindergarten or first grade sister, brother. And this is that acknowledgement that some of them might be late to school because they're the one, not the parent, getting the younger siblings together. And I just wanted to make sure that it's nuanced and they, they don't feel penalized. It's like, oh, why didn't you come to school? And they're like, well, you know, they might not say it, but they're like, well, I'm the one in the house, I'm the parent. I'm the one who gets so-and-so to school who's in first grade and I, he didn't wanna comb his hair, he didn't wanna eat breakfast. And that could be, if it, if they think of it as punitive, they're like, it's not even my fault, it's little so-and-so. And so just to make sure that, you know, if they say, hey, look, I'm having a hard time, that we, we do work with them.
Yes, absolutely. And you're absolutely right. Some of the parents are saying, well, my, the younger sibling was sick, so the older sibling have to stay home and watch that child. And we're making sure, do you have internet access or do they have access to Google Classroom to make sure that they're completing their work? So we're trying to remove all barriers. But yes, parents are being candid and honest. But yes, parents are being candid and honest with me in terms of why their child is not in school. So yes, thank you for that. Anyone else?
So, um, I know, thank you, kudos, you talked to all those parents, right?
Yes.
You need some water? But, um, I'm just curious, how did parents respond when their child is in eighth grade and they found out that their child is reading at second and third and fourth grade levels?
So some of the parents, it was like, what? But it wasn't like they didn't know, because the teachers have contacted them and they've seen their grades in terms of missing assignments. So wasn't, there was no parent that said, I had no idea, not one parent said that. One parent looked, like, the parents looked at it and say, okay, what can we do? And I always ended with, so your question should be, Ms. O, what are you gonna do for my child? And so that's when I let them know exactly what we're doing for their child in terms of prescriptions and trying to close that achievement gap. So not one parent was surprised, they were appalled, and they told me at different things they're gonna do, like the games going away and the phones going away and different things like that. But they knew, they, most of them know their children and they know exactly what they're doing at home or not doing.
And so two other quick things. During your SCL chats, are you guys, um, like, talking to them about, like, executive functioning skills? Like, how do you prepare to be to school on time? You know, laying out your clothes the day before, putting your backpack in a certain place? Because even though this happened in some of our homes, some homes it doesn't. And so every morning, they're like, where's the backpack, where are my keys? They don't have systems in place in their homes, so they just don't even know this is what you should do.
Yes, preparing the night before, and, and thank you for bringing that up, because we even did, uh, executive functioning skills in terms of parent-teacher conferences. And so the children were able to go through that in terms of the student-led conferences and talk about that. So yes, so thank you for that.
And the final question, so, I love this data, but it is concerning that the numbers are increasing instead of going down. We think, uh, you know, this is from August seventeen to the October thirteenth, and then that's to November, instead of it going down, it's increasing. So my, um, whoever reported that, out of the one twenty-four, that thirty, is it thirty-nine of the students were tardy three times?
Three or more times.
So were they counted three times in that one twenty-four score? Cause then my number, my math can't add up.
No, so that's number of students, so no.
Single student, okay, and some of them were tardy multiple times, okay.
Correct, yes.
So out of, what's the student population, a little less than four hundred?
Three hundred thirteen students.
So one-third of our population is tardy?
Correct.
A little over one-third?
Correct. It's about six a day, six tardies a day, averaging.
Oh, quick, quick question, but that, that could only be like, um, like a five-minute thing or something.
Sometimes it's only one minute.
Right, okay.
So sometimes they're here, and so school, the bell rings, the tardy bell rings at eight twenty-five. Eight twenty-six, you're considered tardy.
Right.
And, and we have to stick, stick to that.
Oh, no, and I, I, I definitely wanna say count them as tardy, but I just wanna know just from the high level, they might only be missing the pledge of allegiance and the Lindt pledge, they're not missing instruction time all the time. Sometimes, it, we might have a high tardy rate, but it might not, um, it might not hurt academics. Not that, we don't wanna get it up, we definitely do. But I just wanna make sure I know that that's not missing instruction time necessarily, but sometimes it's just being late.
Exactly, one minute, two minute, you're, like, it's like eight twenty-five and you're walking in, you're tardy.
Tardy, okay.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, with that said, that is, um, interesting. Out of this number, um, it would be interesting to see how many are, are late by five minutes or whatever, and then at what point in the tardiness does it into, impact the instruction? Even though all of it really does, because then you're transitioning into the classroom, everybody else is settled down, and you're putting your coat up and you're doing this, and it just depends if you got out of mom, dad's, auntie's car, just regulated, and then that's further, you know, I need to really give you additional attention. So I get it, you know, it all impacts.
Yeah, unfortunately, Power School doesn't give you a timestamp on when you enter in the tardy. But, um, but yeah, that would be cool if Power School did that. Yeah.
I know, at some point, was it Swiss or some, something used to, or something, one of those? Oh, we wasn't around, Swiss, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Board, Administration, Community, and, um, Staff. Uh, so I just wanted to give a brief update from the Special Services Department, um, on the McKinney-Vento status. So, um, this just gives, um, the first two columns just talks about where we were from the day, from the first day of school, McKinney-Vento, we had three students. If you go towards the bottom, um, by September fifth, we had eight students, uh, eligible for McKinney-Vento status. Um, since then, we've had one additional family, uh, one additional student added. So we have a total of ten students, um, that's eligible for McKinney-Vento. Any questions about this? All right, all right, so then the next thing is, um, I will have the privilege and honor to, uh, take my special education teachers on a conference to the Council, uh, the Illinois Council for Exceptional Children. It was in Naperville. Um, we had, uh, time to, some bonding time, but we also got time to, um, attend a bunch of conferences. These are all the conferences that we attended, it was actually some more, but I didn't want the, the text to get too small. Um, and so I just wanted to give our teachers, our special education teachers that was able to attend tonight, just a moment to talk about their experience, uh, attending the conference, and, um, the impact that it's had on their, um, teaching, uh, the instruction.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Christina Serselli, and I am a specialized education teacher for pre-kindergarten, kindergarten to first grade, so some of the youngest learners here. Um, I teach both ELA and mathematics. My experience attending the ICC conference was refreshing and informative. It was great to hear from and get the perspectives from other specialized education teachers in the state of Illinois. One major takeaway that I got from attending the conference was how to approach working with students who are experiencing a behavior in the moment. I have to say that I have been guilty of focusing only on the behavior and providing and giving the student a punish, punishing the behavior. When, from this conference, I learned that it's really getting to understand why that student is experiencing that behavior and working together with that student to figure out why they, why they demonstrated that behavior and work on possible alternative ways for them to express themselves. It has definitely opened my eyes to really, in the future, focusing on addressing the why versus the actual matter that happened. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, my name is Ms. Lawson, I work for the second and third grade special education students, thank you, that's bold. Um, some of the things I love about the Illinois Council for Exceptional Children at the convention, um, we had a lot of team building that, uh, was very beneficial to us. Um, I learned a lot from their experience in special services. We were able to reflect on the conference and our different teaching styles. We shared ideas and encouraged growth for our students as well as ourselves. Um, we were able to network with different so, um, schools and vendors who gave us materials to use for our classrooms. I learned different teaching strategies to use in my classroom, different ways to utilize my, my student checklist to help the kids stay on path, cause they get off path sometimes, can't pay attention for long periods of time. So that helped a lot, um, different tips on developing rapport with the students. Um, we learned different ways to handle challenging behaviors in the classroom. Um, one of the takeaways for me from the convention was from one of the many presenters, behavioral analyst named Lainey Lawson. She believed that every educator should have the resources to create environments that they enjoy. And every teacher should be confident and happy in the classroom, especially regarding student behavior. The ICC convention was very beneficial for me. It helped my confidence and has made me happier in the classroom. That's it.
Good evening, Board, uh, of Education, Community Staff. My name is Nicole Mister, I'm the, um, you not hear me? I'm so sorry. My name is Nicole Mister, I'm the fourth and fifth grade special education teacher. Um, my experience at the conference was, it was, if I could sum it up, it was amazing, wonderful. Um, I'm very grateful to be able to, to have been able to go. Um, like the lady said before, we did a lot of team building. Um, we heard from some, uh, wonderful people. Um, I wanted to attend every session, but it's our time, they give us the ability to. Um, two of my favorite sessions were, um, is belonging all that really matters? Um, in the classroom and giving our children dignity and respect. Um, another one was because my caseload has a lot of children with specific learning disabilities. I was able to hone in on that and get some tips and tricks to help my students in the classroom. Um, so I'm just so appreciative of, um, you all for allowing us to go, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies, for presenting, and we did have our middle school, um, teachers attend as well. They just couldn't be here tonight, um, but I was able to get all five of our teachers out, get the coverage we needed, um, no, nothing went wrong while we were gone. Um, and so I just truly appreciate this opportunity and look forward to, um, continuing these conferences with our, with our staff. Any questions?
Tanya Taylor, no question, I just wanna say kudos. It's always welcoming to hear when staff, teachers, um, are able to do professional development, because we all know how important that is, you never learn enough. So just taking the time out of the day to listen with the team building, having an open ear. Um, going forward, if you guys hear of any other opportunities, please share with, um, um, your direct reports, because I'm sure that the board will support them, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Kiefer, if you could provide the data that they were asking about earlier, thank you.
Um, yep, so I did, uh, was able to get some of the data. Um, as far as, uh, which, uh, the amount of students, uh, with disabilities or IEPs, um, that's reflected for the reading and the math. Um, for the reading and math, math scores. So with the information that I received, um, this overall data, we have forty, forty, for, this is, I'm sorry, this is reading, so for reading, we have fifty-two percent of our students, um, here that are Level One in reading. Um, so Level One proficiency in reading. And.
Hello, everyone. So the question that was asked was looking specifically at the IAR scores that was presented, and how many of the students are children with disabilities? So I'm using the IAR category, the way they operationalize it, because the district has asked to make sure that it's matching as we go towards the report card. So I wanna be clear, that when we talk about children with disabilities, we're talking about both IEPs and five oh four, because that's the way ISB puts that together. So this number is reflected on that. So when I'm looking at the reading scores for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three current students, um, had IAR scores of forty-two point two-two percent of the students were a Level One. Then when I flip, and I'm going to now go to the math data, and it is forty-four point four-four percent of the students were a Level One for the IAR scores for children with disability. Which again, is did not meet expectations yet, the way ISB defines that category.
So how many number of students is that?
Give me one second, and I can get that for you. Yes.
So for reading, it was eighteen students, and for math, it was fifteen students. Across all grade levels?
Across all grade levels. And then we can break it down by grade level as well, but across all grade levels. And then to answer your question for the IAR scores, last year, current students last year, no?
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Wilson? Thank you, next.
Does it, any questions for me?
Well, before, I was about to say, thank you for the work that you're doing with your team. Before your team left, I wanted to tell them, thank you for taking a step to go get the, the extra, or to learn, to get the extra education as to what's going on in special education, so that they can give our students the best that we, they have to offer. So Ms. Kiefer and your staff, thank you.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
So this is what, uh, Dr. Robertson alluded to earlier in terms of the student attendance. And so this is the banner in which every single child, every single teacher in the whole school was able to sign, attend, attend today, achieve tomorrow. So that is our banner, and that's what, uh, we'd like to show you in terms of the signing of the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one thing, where, uh, last year, the board had our focused on the seventy. If we updated, what is our new number or whatever? You know, I, I, we told them about it, right? They, they knew.
They know the seventy.
What is our new, I mean, where we, where do we?
Are we still at seventy percent of our kids?
What do we wanna do?
We're still focusing on them.
No, I mean, like, what's our?
Are you asking, has it decreased?
Yeah, like, what's our number, cause now it's just.
So instead of being seventy percent?
So sixty-five percent of students are not proficient in reading.
Instead of seventy?
Instead of seventy.
Okay.
Oh, right, okay.
Eighty-eight percent.
All right. That's more board stuff, but.
The math is eighty-eight percent?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Not meeting, not.
Reading is, not, no, reading was.
Reading sixty-five.
Sixty-five percent.
Not meeting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Recommend approval for disposal of obsolete technology, Mr. Ellis Q.
Good evening, Board of Education, community members, staff, guests. So the purpose of this is to destroy broken equipment. We're required by E-Rate and other grants and state laws to dispose of technology that was purchased by the Board of, of Education. So we've got eighty video cameras that are obsolete. We could either destroy them or give them away, they're purchased in local funds. We have extreme switches, rocky access points, those are purchased E-Rate funds, they need to be destroyed. They were purchased in twenty seventeen, E-Rate requires us to destroy them. We got two broken computers, one's from twenty eleven, and one is from, uh, twenty seventeen, they don't work. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Q. All right, moving right along. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that. Whoa, I make a motion. Make a motion that, for the board to approve disposal of obsolete technology.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Buchanan?
Yay.
Board Member Luis Wolfert? Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary Griffin?
Yay.
Board Vice President Taylor?
Yay.
Board President Hanlon?
Yay.
Board Member Morris, absent.
Motion carries. Okay. Next is update on tentative levy, twenty twenty-three levy, excuse me, Mr. Aron.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, community members and staff. Um, tonight is simply a discussion of the tentative tax levy. Tonight is simply a discussion of the tentative tax levy that we're hoping to report to the county in December. Right now, we have to work through the tax levy worksheet with the information that we have available to us to identify what we think the county will ultimately allow us to levy. And so the way that process works is most of that is handled by Cook County. Because we're in Cook County, we operate under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or PTEL. Those acronyms and, and Property Tax Extension Limitation Law essentially means the tax caps. So if we say we're in a tax cap county or we have to operate under the tax caps, that is the driving factor behind that. PTEL was enacted in Cook County in nineteen ninety-four, so the district has been operating within PTEL basically for the last thirty years. Right now, property taxes are approximately seventy-seven percent of District Ninety-two's annual operating budget. And there is a few variables that can affect the school district's tax levy each year. The main variable, the one driving factor, is the annual CPI increase. CPI is the Consumer Price Index, or better known as inflation. And that is capped annually at five percent. So no matter how high inflation goes, the maximum that we can use in, in the formulas that the county will utilize is five percent. Other factors might be new property growth, which at the moment, there's nothing considerable that would be applicable on the coming year. And the other would be any changes in bond payments. And as you know, the district issued bonds last year. Those bond payments are flat and fixed and they do not change. So they will not affect the, the tax levy going forward for the foreseeable future. Because CPI is the, the biggest driving factor in what the district can levy, here's a history of the last several years of what CPI has done. Notably there, it's hard to see, it's twenty-twenty-one, that's the largest spike. CPI identified for the purposes of PTEL was seven percent that year. So even though seven percent could potentially be used in the limiting rate formula, it is capped at five percent. So even though the math would have been higher, the county caps that and levels it off to make sure that school districts can't exceed a certain amount each year that they ask from the tax base. This line here simply depicts what the district's tax levy overall has done over the last ten years. And so, you know, you could see that there's steady increases each year. Each time there's an increase here, again, the most predominant factor there is changes to CPI. I wanted to show this because the next slide is the best way that I can illustrate the relationship between the taxable value and the district, which is where those tax dollars come from, and this overall levy. So if we look at this line here, this orange line, it's actually the same data of this orange line here. Because of how much higher the numbers go on this graph, the bottom orange line actually looks flat, but it's not. It actually follows this shape here. The top line, the blue, that seems to go up and down each year, that is the EAV or the Equalized Decessed Value. When you get your tax bills at home, the value that they use to determine how much you owe each year, not just to the school district, but to all the other taxing bodies that you pay into, that's determined by your equalized decessed value. When we total up all of the taxable value in the district, we get that blue line each year. But the, the thing that keeps that orange line nice and, and kind of level or more even keel than the taxable value of property is basically the limiting rate formula that the county uses to determine what we can actually levy on an annual basis. So again, even if home values, property values go up significantly or down significantly, the district can only ask for a certain amount more capped at approximately five percent each year, assuming there's no other surprises. So we worked through a levy worksheet. In the orange box there is what the proposed levies for each fund are identified as at the moment. To the left of that orange box is the prior year's levy. Essentially, what we did is we looked at the current budget and identified areas where there might be shortfalls in different funds to try to correct those as much as we can. Most of the movement in here is going to be, you know, maybe tens of thousands of dollars at the most. And so what we're trying to do here is this process with the county, again, operating under those tax caps is we could ask for, you know, a hundred million dollars. They're going to cap it down to approximately seven million something because of that formula. So to be realistic, what we do is we look at the prior levy, take into account the variables that we know, and we simply ask for somewhere around six to seven percent higher than what we were able to levy last year. We, we overask knowing that we're going to be capped at that five percent and knowing that the, the county is going to restrict the amount that we can levy in, in most of those funds. The main consideration, the main concern here is that we don't want to have a shortfall in the education fund. So if the levy ends up getting, you know, we ask for too little and they use that number, we could end up restricting the amount of funds that we can generate in the education fund. The education fund represents about sixty-five percent of the tax dollars in that orange box right there. The reason that it represents about sixty-five percent is because those are the dollars that go directly to the classroom. They pay the teachers, the educators, the student aides and provide all of the resources or a lot of the resources that are utilized in the classroom. And so we definitely want to make sure that we're able to maximize the proceeds there. So even though our goal is to capture as much as possible, we are going to be limited by CPI. And CPI was announced, by the way, at three-point-seven percent. So it should be closer to four percent than five when all the dust settles. But for right now, it's cut off on my screen there, but at the bottom of that orange box, the levy that we're going to ask the county to extend is about seven million, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars, knowing full well that they are going to reduce that to some degree. And we will get, you know, hopefully as many dollars as we can, especially in the educational fund. Let's see. The next steps in the levy process would be that there's always a public hearing each year published in a newspaper of local circulation. And there's a timing factor to that, that it can be published no more than fourteen days and no less than seven days prior to the public hearing. Because that public hearing will take place at the regularly scheduled meeting in December, on December nineteenth, we are estimating that the publication will take place on December ninth. And then once we go to that meeting, we'll ask the board to then formally adopt the levy so that we can provide that at a later date to the county clerk's office and make sure that levy's on file for the coming year. I do have a couple other slides, but I'm going to pause there if you have any questions and I can continue on.
I'm sorry, I have not committed this to memory. I probably should. Do we normally publish it in the suburban life? Or where do we normally publish it? I just don't want people to think that, you know, we're not being transparent or whatever.
Yeah, I'll look back at the budget. There's a publication for the budget and I'll make sure that whatever newspaper we use for that, you know, we'll probably use for this publication as well, so.
It's typically this time.
Yeah. So if that's the case, we can continue doing that. I mean, we don't want any surprises with the community, so.
Where people normally look for the data. The other thing is, I believe we, in the past, have put copies at the library. And I know other communities have as well.
Sure.
And just whatever we've been doing consistently, I want us to continue to do it so that people that normally go wherever they go, if they go to the library or look in a certain publication, that they're, the data is available there.
Yeah.
So that they don't think we're not being transparent.
I did not know that. That's great information and we'll make sure that we do everything we can to make sure the information is out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
So one other thing that I wanted to cover today, because it came up in, in past meetings, was maybe some misconceptions or maybe a better understanding of, of your tax bill and where some of those tax dollars go. And so here's a snip of a second installment tax bill from the current year. And so every one of these lines on your tax bill is an entity that this particular homeowner, which I think I took their name off of it, but this person pays taxes to each of these entities every single year. What that means is each one of these entities goes through the same levy process that we're starting here tonight and finishing in December. They're all doing the same thing. So they're crunching the numbers, they're trying to figure out what they can and should ask for. Some of them have very similar limitations to us and some of them do not. But one, one thing that people definitely look at, as we all know here, is they look at where their money goes and they definitely notice that most of those dollars will go to the school districts, not just Lindop, but all school districts, including Triton College in this case, and Proviso two oh nine. So one question I would get a lot, because I've dealt with a lot of referendum campaigns and, and talks about tax impact and how, how these tax bills are affected, is, you know, why, for example, does Lindop ninety-two collect the highest amount between these three entities? And the best way that I can illustrate that is to simply look at a map. So if we look here, it's kind of hard to see if you're in, in the back of the room, but that little blue and orange rectangle in the middle of that map, that represents Lindop pretty accurately. Lindop covers one-point-five square miles of, of area and any property located within those boundaries are available for us to extend those tax bills to. When we compare us to Proviso two oh nine, they cover about twenty-four-point-five square miles. And so, you know, as we go up, Triton College covers about sixty-three square miles. On the right-hand side, again, I apologize, it is kind of hard to see. Lindop School District, the total taxable value or the EAV that's used by the county in that small rectangle totals about a hundred and nineteen million dollars of taxable value. You go up to the high school district, that jumps to two-point-seven billion. So you could basically fit between maybe twenty and twenty-two Lindops into Proviso two oh nine. And then going up from there, Triton College covers about ten-point-nine billion in, in taxable value for those properties. So again, I apologize, it is kind of hard to see, but the tax rates are listed there as well because it looks like Proviso's tax rate is smaller, and that's true. It, it can be smaller because they have more taxing, they have more taxpayers splitting up their tax bill than Lindop, Lindop doesn't here in our community in broad view. So that's a lot of information in one breath there, you know, I'm happy to discuss that further. But I think this is the best way to understand, you know, why it appears that maybe a majority of your school tax dollars come to Lindop. There, I'll pause again for questions.
Tanya Taylor. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Arndt. You are business manager. I think it was very important to let the community know when they look at their tax bill and they look on that left-hand side, why the majority of their dollars come to the elementary school. So thank you for breaking it down so that we have clarity, we're transparent, and then for understanding. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, yeah. I've been on the board since two thousand and six. I've never seen a presentation like that, so I do appreciate that. It would be nice for something like that to be really on our social media pages and stuff because people still don't understand a lot, a lot of people still don't understand property taxes and. But I mean, the, I love the visual too, like, this is why Triton College gets such a small amount because you have a bigger catch base. You know, you got X number of people pouring into that pool. So of course, you got X number of people, the, the percentage is, the dollar amount is smaller. But if you got a one-point-five mile supporting seven-point-five million dollars, of course, your amount is going to be greater. But that would be nice to be on social media. I'm one of seven. Kind of poll about that, I guess. Minus the property tax PIN number. But that was great.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, but thank you.
Well, thank you. We know this is your, your sweet spot, the bonds. The really boring stuff. That's, that's what I'm.
So President, do you agree? I mean, would that be something that would be great to be put on our social media page? I think it would be.
I haven't noted.
Talk about at a later date. Well, it's coming up now.
We're discussing. We're discussing. Ms. Arndt, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Update and discussion on WISE Ed Conference from November first, twenty-twenty-three to November fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Dr. Betts and Dr. Jackson.
Good evening again, board members, community and staff. We are thankful that we were allowed to attend the WISE Ed Conference in Arizona. They do value the partnership that we have with them and we were recognized again by WISE Ed. And for those of you who do not know, Steve Wozniak is who WISE is and Steve Wozniak is the co-founder of Apple. And so we received that award from him as well as being with probably about fifty more districts. But they are all at different levels. There's the introductory level. There is maybe the second year of implementation. We were recognized for full implementation throughout the district. Pre-K through eight, we were able to share what we do with our students. And ours is being delivered through our art teacher who has done an amazing job and has made it come to life. All of the children are now typically asking, how can they get into art class? And her elective is overfilled with waiting list with it. So thank you all again for allowing us that opportunity.
Good evening, Board of Education and community. I also just echo Dr. Jackson's words. Thank you so much for allowing me to attend that conference with Dr. Jackson. It, it's really amazing to see what's possible. So we're so heavily implemented with these STEM programs here and we have been a model for this, this area and have been able to share that experience with other schools across the country. But just a fun fact that we're incorporating this into our pre-K play-based centers this year. And so that is coming up in implementation. So we're going to be, you know, growing the future robot programmers right here at Lindop. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the discussion on triple I Conference. That's the Board of Education and Administrators. I'll start that one. On this weekend, we were fortunate enough to go down for our own professional development. The board, along with our administrators here from Lindop District Ninety-two. That conference was wonderful, as it is every year that we attend. We got to learn some good things that's going on within the state of Illinois from other school districts as well. I was fortunate enough to, to go to some board event, some board president workshops to see what other board presidents are facing in their district with their boards and to see what all it takes to be a board president. Okay? And I'll pass it to the rest of my colleagues that was there, Mr. Dawson.
I enjoyed it very much. I was able to network with a couple individuals who work in different administrations. I, I didn't even know, one of my fraternity brothers is a assistant superintendent. Found that out. And I was able to go to a conference that was about, because I'm on the policy committee, it was helping the administrative team set the agenda with performance through policy. And so I'm going to be trying to learn more about how we can reach out to our field services director because they're supposed to be able to also help us understand all the data. So when the stuff go up on the screen, so our eyes don't gloss over, they can help us out with that. So that was a good one. But, and also it's just, the keynote speaker at the end was really dynamic as well. I would like to.
Mr. Buchanan.
Thank the board for trusting the need or go up and vote for us and represent the board at all. Appreciate y'all.
Our delegates.
Right. And thank you for supporting me.
No problem. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Myself, I went to a number of different courses, but to me, one of the most interesting was School Safety and Violent Event Incident Management and Reunification Overview. And it was interesting to see that a lot of that we're already taking care of because we do have our police force that interacts with our students. So there's that safety feature where kids aren't afraid of the police. And also, we've been practicing different other things like how you meet up after a prospective incident. And it was showing us new techniques on how they were tracking the actual students and how to keep the parents away from a particular area if there has been an actual incident there because you don't want parents to pick up a child that could have been a witness to something that went on. And they wanted to be able to go over everything with the children prior to them hooking up with their parents. And so everything was very insightful in that. And I think we, Dr. Jackson was in that particular conference with me and we were both figuring there were some things that Lindop could take from that and practice in our community also.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'd like to touch on something that you said about our local police department. If you guys don't know this, Robby Police is here every morning. When I drop my baby off, Robby Police is here. When I pick her up, Robby Police are outside as well. So our students do get to see the good side of the guys behind. So our students do get to see the good side of the guys behind the badge. Um, they're not always the bad guys. And it's it's very good to know that the Roby Police Department definitely has a relationship with our students. So I just wanted to, since you brought them up. Okay, next, Ms. Williams Wilford.
So, thank you for allowing us um, to go to the conference. I went to many different uh, workshops, one of them was the keynoter, um, Sarita Mabens on Sunday. She's really great, she um, spoke spoke about, uh, she's a motivational speaker plus an entertainer at the same time. But just common courtesy things, being nice, being kind, and um, she gave some ten tips in terms of when you interacting with people, you know, because conflict is bound to happen, but how do you handle it? And how can you ask questions in a way that people don't get so defensive all the time? Um, also, I went to a workshop with a school district, um, to get, I can't figure out which one is the one was, but um, it made me feel good that um, one of the things that they had recognized was when they're looking at data and the board goes that everything should go up under those goals, and that way you know you're staying focused on what the work you're doing, because it's always a lot of work to do, but where does this align with our goals? So that was a really great one. Um, another great workshop was talking about trauma-informed and how a lot of our children, as we kind of heard earlier, are are going through many things. And as you know, in many families, I'll speak about the black family, uh, what happens at home, stay at home, don't go outside this house. And so a lot of times they're going through a lot, and there's a lot of trauma happening in the family. But we're not aware of it because you don't speak about it, and you don't talk about those things. So therefore, you really don't know what children are going through and how that's impacting their learning. You know, if they don't have any food on the table, or as Mr. Dawson was saying earlier, if they're getting X number of kids ready and so on and so forth, all that's on their brain, because then I got them here late and mama's gonna get me or daddy or uncle or auntie or whatever. So just the trauma that our children go through often and how they show up in the classroom and how we can better support them. I mean, it made my heart leap that, you know, even when they come late, oftentimes they're received with you late again, you know, that kind of thing, but the fact that they're welcoming like, oh, you showed up today. You know, that's pretty much how I am at my school, like, thank you for coming to school, I'm so excited to see you. You know, that type of thing, because they already know they late, you don't need to reiterate that. You know, so that really made me feel good, but um, and that speaks to this workshop about the trauma, you don't know what they went through. You don't know what staff go through even before they come here as well. And what the parents are going through, you know, what they, and so they show up and they're taking out something on you as a teacher. It has nothing to do with you, it's about the fact that I just got a five-day notice and I don't know where I'm going, you know? So, yeah, it was a really great conference once again, I really appreciated going and learned a lot from the workshops and the networking that goes on among people. And the last thing, Mr. Lowe's from Batavia University, he got the award this year. Um, one of the um, school board members, he was the first African-American in Batavia to be elected as a school board, and he didn't run again. But he shored up three blacks on that board before he got off, I'm like, yes. So um, and he founded a foundation so that the work can continue to go on in that community, because there are many people of color in that community, so it was really exciting to hear his speech, he did share with us, so I appreciate it, he let me take pictures of his uh, speech, it was a really powerful speech too. So thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Madam Secretary. Ms. Carter.
Well, um, the the conference I like, I enjoyed the most was the Women in Leadership Conference. Um, there was a lot of superintendents, retired, new, experienced. They were just great, and it was, you know, it's nothing like being in a room full of people empowering, it was empowering, it was inspiring. And one of the things, one of the biggest things I took away was to find out who you are. Stand firm in who you are and be unapologetically yourself. Um, as you get experience in the work world, they want you to act a certain way, they want you to portray yourself a certain way, um, some type of standard that society sets, but I'm a true believer in that you should accept me for who I am. And it felt good to be in the audience in front of a lot of panelists that basically said, this is who I am. Accept me for who I am and respect me for who I am.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was it.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson.
All right, thank you so much, um, I was in the uh, session with Ms. Griffin for safety. A lot of things that we have in in place, but a lot of things uh, that we could be doing additionally, so I can't wait to talk to the safety team with it. Um, I also was able to attend the Superintendent's Support, The Secret to Success, as well as Do You Really Live Here?, a board's role and administration's role and student residency. So they were very, very informative, uh, they were packed and um, just, uh, it was a different feel this year. So thank you so much for allowing me to attend.
Thank you.
Also presented, so thank you for supporting us. I forgot, thank you so much for supporting us.
I was definitely going to give you guys your recognition for their presentation, Ms. Lyons, Dr. Jackson, Dr. Betts, you guys did a wonderful job on Saturday, um, presenting, putting Lindop on the map. Thank you for expanding our brand. We really appreciate it. Oh, before I, before we move forward, while we're talking about triple I and Sarita, right? That was her name, the keynote from Sunday? Okay, if you don't have nothing nice to say, you don't.
Say nothing at all.
Or, me which? That's right.
Yep, that too.
Somebody was paying attention. Okay, so a few, a few, just a few of them quotes, um, her ten positive communication phrases. How can we resolve this is one? What will it take? I would appreciate, I'm concerned. Help me understand, I need your help, I notice and I'm wondering. Would you be willing to? You may not realize, are you aware of the effect? So those are ten things that Ms. Sarita, that's what she started with on the nice frame, instead of always coming off harsh downgrading or just down, 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 down. Those are the ways that she approaches situations. And how she has conversations, those difficult conversations with or when she had a staff. Okay, all right. As we move forward, um, discussion on rejoining the National School Board Association, Ms. Penny Williams.
So yes, um, I forgot where we were when we were, um, when this information came up, oh, we was at the, um, I think on Saturday with y'all.
Retreat?
Yeah, the retreat on Saturday, that's what it came up. Um, because initially, when we um, did not continue our membership with the National School Board Association, we were um, informed incorrectly that we recently found out, um, that we thought that since we were no, since the state of Illinois pulled out of the National School Board Association, that we could not be a part of them anymore. And we found out that we were informed incorrectly. Um, that was one of the conferences that we really appreciated going to and that we learned a lot. Um, I don't know, Ms. Griffin, I'm putting you on the spot, um, do you want to elaborate more? Basically, the state of Illinois pulled out and um,
There was, there was a bit of a conflict in the way funds were being spent. And a lot of the schools didn't feel as though they had that much input on it. So in the end result was that a lot of them pulled out of the whole organization. But come to find out, you, there were different changes that went on, like, for instance, I was under the impression that they no longer had the urban portion of it. That schools like Lindop would more or less be more inclined to go to, because they can help deal with issues that we're experiencing. Whereas when we actually spoke with members, they did incorporate an urban show as a leg of that as they had before, and I had spoke with several diff- other districts that had actually gone to those and they said that it was very enlightening. And then it was a lot more, shall we say, inclusive than what it had been before. And for that reason, we wanted to become a member of it once again.
All right, thank you, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, well, with that being said, I make the motion that the board rejoins national, the National School Board Association.
Board Member Buchanan second the motion.
I mean, Dr. Jay, did you have anything to say about that?
No.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yeah.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent, for Vice President, I mean, Vice President Taylor.
Yeah.
For Member Williams.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay, Rueven right along, recommend approval for an MOU with Make It Happen to be paid from the educational fund in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Dr. Jackson, Mr. Darren Hills.
Uh, good evening, uh, we have uh, rejoined up with uh, Make It Happen with Mr. Hills. Community member, uh, parent extraordinaire. Uh, just always trying to help before, when he was with Lindop, we uh, was with the college mentoring experience. And uh, I'm excited about what is coming up, he's also working with Regina Green. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Jackson, uh, good evening, everybody, uh, Board President Hannah, Vice President Taylor, and our esteemed board members.
Thank you.
Uh, Principal, uh, Ms. Hope Corey Spore, Deputy Dr. Roberson. And we cannot forget our community members as well as our great Mayor Regina Thompson. So I uh, stand here before you just to tell you a little bit about myself, I am the uh, founder and executive director of Make It Happen. Uh, our mission is to be a resource within intersectionality of youth, parents, educators, and community to work on. To work as one to assist in helping our young scholars become the best version of themselves possible. Just a little bit about myself, I'm uh, I've had many professional experiences over the years. I have the opportunity of managing organizations in operations standpoint, participated in many community liaison initiatives as well as program development and thriving organizational efforts to make an impact on a lot of the young people throughout Chicago and area. I'm passionate about supporting and uh, inspiring our youth, uh, assisting families as needed and partnering with schools and community organizations, all on the behalf of ensuring that we are doing our part to move our communities forward, especially within the great village above. With anything, we always have to start at home, you know, I had the opportunity to work with a lot of organizations and schools on the uh, in the far west suburbs, which is great, but here it is, I'm driving right past Lindop, driving right past the school district every day, and I feel a little guilty of not being able to be able to take care of home and participate in some type of way. But also, I also like to introduce uh, my colleague, I'm joined by Ms. Regina Green, she's our community liaison officer, and she'll be sharing more information about herself and experience.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Mayor Thompson, community leaders, and educator in the administration. My name is Regina Green, I am a community, uh, I'm a resident of the community of Proviso Township. I also uh, am a former employee of Bellwood School District eighty-eight. I am, um, I hold a MS MOB as well as a MBA as a chief school business official. I am here today because I have a passion for children. Education is not a preparation for me, education is the life itself.
Thank you, Ms. Green, you know, what do we want to accomplish? Uh, ultimately, uh, as we are working together, I felt like I was able to learn a lot about tonight, you know, we got a class in civics. Uh, we also learned how hardworking our teachers and administrator staff are, uh, as well as our board, but more importantly, the passion that comes from our families that represent our students who we serve, you know, ultimately, it's our students, other ones, uh, if it's no longer about the young people, we need to really stop anything that we're doing. So we want to also help our families and educators by providing access to exposure to high school. Here we are right now, I saw a lot of the metrics that were shared, that's important data. Uh, I know that everything cannot be encapsulated into the metrics, but one thing we do know that we all have homes to go to every day. We also know that the way that that home, those homes are structured is different every time, so numbers can definitely be a represented, representation of what we are managing through and growing through within our daily lives. But as young people, none of us can sit here and say how it, uh, what it's like to be an eighth grader in twenty twenty-three. I mean, you know, back in the day, I would always say, yeah, you know, my dad would say, yeah, I walked eight miles to get to school. And here it is, I say, okay, you know what, we had to walk eight miles to get to a bus, but now these kids say, hey, we endured a pandemic. As an adult, as a young person, yeah, we went through it as an adult, but we were also able to understand the dynamics and adjust accordingly. These young people, we hear about the term long COVID. They're being impacted by that, social and emotional, you know, so for them to be able to get up every day, we're not giving them an excuse or a pass not to come to school to learn and be productive young individuals, but we also want to remind them that we are here to help. What does that help look like? Uh, we want to start with being able not only to help the school, the district, uh, the board, we also want to be able to help the village. And in tune, be able to help those young people to let them know that we are here of assistance. Whether that's being able to have exposure of the process, we have a lot of families right now, they should be applying for those eighth graders to get into the different high schools. There was a great high school fair that was presented by uh, the board in Linda, uh, a couple of months ago where it seemed like it was a great turnout, you know, but again, now we need to be able to follow up on them, see what the next steps are. Are our young people prepared? Do we, are we always taking an inventory on whether their needs for the families? So there's some of the things, um, you know, as we're looking into our local schools, Proviso Wees, PMSA, what about the families that want to, whether they can afford it or not, send their kids to private education? We have resources that can assist with that and give it in many different formats. Uh, and also expose, exposing our scholars to everything, not only within Browning, but also outside of Browning as well. Being able to understand what it's like to go and receive professional development, starting their resumes early. By eighth grade, they should have at least twenty-five hours of uh, service hours on their resumes. That way, again, we're setting the foundation so that they can build upon that later on. Um, and also collaborating with uh, Lindop Educators Councilors, eighth grade families to identify the needs. And more importantly, understanding what needs to be in place to make sure that we have uh, test prep labs for those high schools. Test as well as our middle school is very important, you know, we have uh, some young people that uh, just don't have the resources. As a parent, you know, we we're going through, you know, I have a son that I grad, my my, both my kids attended Lindop graduated. My daughter's a uh, senior at Illinois State studying psychology, my son is a senior walking Christian. So we're in the process, y'all pray for us, because we have two graduations next spring. But I said all that in order to say, if I didn't have the village around me of individuals that could help me grow through that process, we all know that it takes twelve years to create a high school graduate. Through those twelve years, our neighbors, our community partners, we need to ensure that we have those resources, and that's why we're here to help. Uh, some of our pillars of success, uh, youth development, understanding, helping, making sure that we grow our young people. Everything that was poured into us, we need to make sure that we're paying it forward and pouring back into them. Parent engagement, I saw some of the attendance uh, metrics, uh, we all know what it's like waking up in a household every morning, everything that took place the night before, leaning to that morning, and that's not even leaving out of your house. So we need to make sure that uh, we are supporting each other as a village, we also have resources that we can assist in that as well, and community care. You know, being able to, it was a blessing that my kids are able, were able to walk out the house, walk two blocks in the area of Lindop. We are in a environment within the borders of our school district to where we receive kind of a private school experience. We all know our neighbors, even if we don't know by name, we know by face, there's that familiarity that gives us that sense of village to make sure that our young people, even within their roots, you know, it feels like on their, on their route to school, being able to go to school and walk, knowing that whatever you did down the street was going to get home at some point. So you better make sure that you're telling the truth, so that, that's what we're talking about from a community care standpoint. Um, so there are also opportunities for us to identify educational pathways, opportunities after they graduate. You know, I know that uh, we're keeping the metrics, but we want to be able to see what happens when our young people and families, once they move on from eighth grade on on to high school and ultimately on to college. Whether that's to go to a college, university, or to receive a, some type of certification or vocational learner. College can also be a bird, college can be a pronoun, college can be a destination. We need to ensure that they can all understand that, as well as assisting parents as they're going through the high school application. We need to ensure that they can all understand that, as well as assisting parents as they're going through the high school application process, the FAFSA process, I mean, it's, those are type of resources that we want to help identify, and then we can also take a look at sponsoring a spring uh, open house as well. That's an opportunity for us to get another engagement. Maybe we can grow it to the standpoint of a community high school fair that's hosted by Lindup and District ninety-two, just throwing it out there, that's an opportunity. Just some of our, our potential community partners, as well as some of those existing, we know that before they get to college, they, um, have to get to a high school and they have some productivity in their educational, as well as their social growth. Uh, you know, we're looking at some of the local organizations, uh, some of the local colleges that we can participate in and, um, work with them, but also there's a high schools that host open houses. Uh, we have a relationship with Chicago Hope, even though that's a private school, uh, near the West Loop. They, we have relationships where they're willing to actually come to Lindup and host a specific Lindup District ninety-two open house. They're all geared towards that, and then they have the funding. They have the funding, it's a diverse, um, environment, uh, they also have the opportunities for young people to study abroad, but that's just one example of us being able to actually work together and, uh, understand what opportunities are out there, and not to just put it out there, stick it on the pad and run away, but be there through the entire process, uh, for that. So there is an opportunity as well, and Ms. Green will speak on that for the, um, Triton Kid, Kid College.
College for Children. There's a three, Triton College is offering a three-day, uh, twelve-hour college event for all of our elementary school students, uh, between the ages of ten to fifteen. This is designed to provide middle school-aged children with the opportunity to learn career fields and skills needed to, for various opportunities. I said, we seen some children here today speaking, and they spoke very, very well. I said, we offer so much for children that are scoring below. We have nothing for our children that are exceeding. This is a program for exceeding children, children that are making it or meeting. This would be something for, um, this college experience would require each student to choose a major and a minor. And they will have a college professor that walks them along the process. And I know that our seventh and eighth graders aren't ready for college, but most of the time when they are ready, they don't know what to do. Why can't we get ahead of the system? You know, we want our children to, if they not just go to Triton, we want them to go off to uh, university, black universities, uh, just universities, period. If we, if they're going to a university, you want them to be able to walk in there and know exactly what it is they want to do prior to making it there. And a lot of our children go to school and don't finish because they don't know the, what to expect. With this program, it would allow them to know exactly how to choose classes, what to choose, and a career, help them to develop a career path. The classes are usually, and I'm gonna first touch on some of the majors. Some of the major things that they offer our children are animal care science, business, culinary, engineering, healthcare, and visual communication. Some of the minors that are offered are computer coding, criminal justice, fine arts, social media, and space science. These classes are free to our students. There's a grant, this is a grant-funded program. They allow them to go three days a week from nine to two, and lunch is provided. And they are, uh, at the end of the program, they do a final project where their family and friends are able to come and see.
Thank you so much, Ms. Green. Uh, and you know, just, I mean, there's not a whole lot to add to that, but that's just an example of some of the opportunities that, uh, that exist, and we want to also be that conduit to help, um, the district, the superintendent, the school, and the parents, and more importantly, our students. We want to make sure that they are in position, again, to be the best version of themselves. Uh, here are some of our community partners, they, they span across a lot of different areas. Uh, C S for, for Success, that's an organization that we're partnered with, they, uh, help young people, uh, from a STEM standpoint, getting involved in STEM. Uh, college mentoring experience, you know, we've had a lot of, uh, young people, when I worked there prior, uh, age, could you imagine sixth, seventh, and eighth graders being able to step foot on a college campus? You know, I know that there is a lot of young people, um, as my daughter and son were going to school, um, in, in our neighborhood, that have, uh, gone on to great colleges and universities and have a great experience. Uh, pretty me, for our young ladies, you know, that's an opportunity, uh, that for them to be supported, uh, receive mentoring, as well as the opportunity to just, again, understanding who they are. I think that one of the things, and I, I love the power of the, uh, young ladies that are coming about this generation, as my daughter tells me, they're standing on business, you know, they're, they're making sure that everyone understands who they are, and they are living their lives unapologetically. That, that energy right there is, 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 is unmatched. And of course, I, I hope everyone is familiar with P L C C A. I think, uh, as we mentioned, that P L C C A offers so much, you know, we think about, think about if we're sending our young people out of the door, to whatever tension we have as parents, that's transferable, you know? The tension to help me lose my hair, being able to make sure I pay their mortgage, pay those tuitions, et cetera, you know, we try to make sure that we shield our young people from that, but energy is transferable, they understand that mom and dad, or auntie, granny, grandpa, they're going through it. And, uh, you know, that'll, that'll even make them reserve to even ask for anything. Whether if they can get this particular item that they have always wanted. So that's where we look at P L C C, how to identi- to identify some of those, uh, resources that are available, whether it's, uh, help with utilities, help with, uh, you know, being able to make sure that there are upgrades to the home. So that's, those are type of the opportunities we want to be able to connect our great families here in Lindup and District ninety-two to, uh, link unlimited scholars, funding for high school. That's, mind you, we are paying for high schools to make sure that they are in great position, you know, our local high schools, Provisal Wees, probably, I'm sorry, P M S A, but what happens, uh, when you just want to make a decision for your family to take a look at something different? Sometimes you don't even get that chance to look at something different if that opportunity is unfathomable. But again, we want to make sure that we utilize link, uh, unlimited scholars. And, uh, H D, you know, that's one of my good friends, our author, A G, uh, if, uh, anybody understands who he is, uh, he, uh, I think his story, he, uh, the movie Hoop Dreams, everybody familiar with that? He came through that whole process, we were able to watch that real life, and it's right now is documented on film of the challenges of, uh, just growing up, uh, in Chicago, west side of Chicago, trying to get to a, uh, private school, and at the end of the day, you didn't have that tuition. So we want to make sure that we just, again, provide those resources, be a, uh, help, not a hindrance, to make sure that uh, not only our, uh, district, our superintendent, our families, the administration, and more importantly, our young people are supported and put in a position to be the best version of themselves as a village.
Thank you for that. Any questions?
No questions but a comment. Thank you for coming. The things that you've run past us have been very informative. And I'm sure there's a lot of students and parents here that would be interested in a lot of the items that you set for the assistance.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Thank you all so much for your time.
If I can add to that, Mr. Hills, Ms. Green, thank you guys so much. Thank you for thinking of Lindup to bring the services that you guys offer right here, home to our families and our students, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
And thank you very much. Um, just the thought of a sixth, seventh, eighth grader going on a college campus. When my girls, um, my children were younger, they started college tours at sixth grade, going out of town in the summers to some of the H B C U's and other college campuses and stuff like that, just to get their foot on on the grounds, to hear the speeches, and so by the time they got in high school and they were selecting colleges, they knew what questions to ask. They had heard those fields so many times, you know? So just being exposed to, you know, these different campuses and stuff would be very beneficial, even if it's just starting off locally, you know, some of the colleges, because we, I mean, we live in Chicago. We are at a great advantage, we have so much within the state of Illinois.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, where they can even just start, you know, putting their foot on some of these, um, campuses, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion that the board approves M O U with Darian Hills. Make it happen to be paid from the educational fund in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
I second the motion.
Roll call, please.
For Member Williams Wolfert.
Yeah.
Vice President Taylor.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yeah.
President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
Secretary Griffin.
Yeah.
For Member Morris, absent.
Motion carries. Moving right along. Recommend approval to utilize Windy City Limousine for board conference transportation to be paid from the community partnership grant. Dr. Jackson, Erin DeGoya, excuse me if I messed your last name up, and Kathy Kane.
Thank you so much. So as, uh, we're looking to build more community partnerships, I know we have one had an opportunity to go over and to meet with the, uh, president of the company, and Erin was there, and they met, uh, us, uh, Mr. Buchanan went with me, and they were able to talk about all of the, um, opportunities that we might have to be able to utilize their services, that very welcoming, uh, very gracious, and so I'm excited, uh, to enter into this, uh, partnership if the board, uh, deems so necessary.
Good evening, Board, um, and community members. I am Erin DeJoy with Windy City Limousine. Um, I just want to take a moment, though, I am not a parent, and it has been really refreshing to see the amount of passion that has been displayed in this room this evening. So if I had children, I would want them to be in the hands of the people in this room, quite honestly. So thank you for the passion and the work that you guys are all doing for this community. So Windy City has been in Broadview since about, I think, twenty fifteen, we've moved a couple times, I've been with them since two thousand eight. Um, we were established with a mission to deliver unparalleled service to various clientele, including those in the education sector. Um, we are a trusted transportation provider for numerous local schools, um, alongside partnerships with major corporations, um, Chicago sports teams. We have a variety fleet of vehicles, so people hear Windy City Limousine, and that's all they hear is limousine, they think automatic luxury. Um, but we have so much to offer, um, from sedans up to motor coaches to provide to board members as well as the student community. Um, our mission statement, global chauffeur transportation company, we honor our commitments, exceed our customer expectations. We truly do employ and invest in the most passionate, loyal, and dedicated professional team, um, in the livery industry, so anytime you guys interact with us, we have your guys' back a hundred percent. Now, again, no request is too large or small. We can offer anything from airport transfers. I know board members go out of town. Also, if you guys do any planning of student trips to and from the airport, if they're going to DC, not all ways drive to DC, um, we have uniform greeter service if people are being met at the airport, simple transfer service from Broadview to downtown or Broadview, um, to another suburb. Board member transportation is mentioned, any school dances we've done, uh, for a variety of schools, field trips, athletic team transportation, student pickup and drop-off services. We currently work with Bellwood School District with their PACE program for their special education. Uh, students getting them to and from school. We work with Comerick School in North Riverside, uh, for their sports teams as well as field trips. And we also work with Hinsdale School District, also running a student program, getting their students to and from school in the morning. Again, driving all your needs, we have a fleet including sedans, S U Vs, stretch limousines, buses that range from fourteen passenger up to fifty-six passenger motor coaches. It's always nice, sometimes with the students, they always get into the school buses, and sometimes when they get into a different kind of bus, it's just seen as a luxury experience, so I can see this partnership being kind of, uh, something for the kids to look forward to when they're planning activities. I know that other members were talking about different, um, like incentives to the students, and I think that this could be a part of those programs as well. Our team is led by, unfortunately, they could not be here today. Kathy Kane's our president, George Jacobs, our C E O, um, if people are Sox fans, they might recognize him as the Eminem guy, he's always there. Um, and then Tracy Raymer, our vice president, and they oversee our entire, uh, management team. I'm gonna kind of scroll through that. Pricing, we are prepared to offer competitive pricing to our schools, we always do, um, starting off, obviously, we've come in with some sedan S U V pricing, warmens for the board members, um, at a reduced rate and kind of a flat rate of the area, if you were going to downtown O'Hare or Midway, it would be a set price. The bus pricing that we provided is discounted down from our retail rates as well. We can also get more creative if you had different opportunities that you want to discuss. Um, contact our team. I have sent some, uh, account information over to Ms. Carter as well as Ms. Jackson. Um, but we believe that being, creating this partnership with Lindup School will open up opportunities for your students as well. Uh, we've also worked with Broadview many times, we've worked with Mayor Thompson on several events, and I do believe we've also done a couple of things with Mayor Thompson, bringing students to Sox games and creating special events for the community. Any questions? Sorry, I talked really fast, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, board members?
Uh, this is Dr. Jackson, this, uh, just to be sure to, the M O U is just reflective of the, the board's needs at this point?
Yes.
Because that's the way it's worded. I just want to make sure I'm gonna read it correctly. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Dawson.
Okay. Uh, I make, Board Member Brian Dawson, I make a motion that the board approves the, um, memo of understanding with memorandum, sorry, memorandum of understanding with Windy City Limousine for board conference transportation to be paid from the community partnership grant.
Cheryl Griffin, I second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Secretary Griffin.
Yeah.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yeah.
For Member Morris, absent. For Vice President Taylor.
Yeah.
For Member Williams.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
This doesn't limit the board to utilizing other areas.
Nor does now, we still have our active contract with People's Care as well.
All right. Recommend approval to close the district on Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Thursday, December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and Friday, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, and Ja- Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty-three, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, and so this is our holiday season, and we are asking for permission from the Board of Education to have the district, uh, closed for the holiday, uh, season, making sure that everyone is aware, uh, so that there won't be any deliveries uh, coming while we're gone, and if there are, they know who to contact, that's going to be Mr. uh, Valentine, but we're asking to have the district closed on Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, Thursday, December twenty-eighth, Friday, December twenty-ninth, and Tuesday, January second, two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, yes, twenty-four, thank you.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approves to close the district on Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Thursday, December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, Friday, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, and Tuesday, January the second, twenty twenty-four.
My second. Roll call, please.
Question.
Wait, 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 question.
So, wait, the other one, the twenty, I know the twenty-fifth is the holiday, the twenty-sixth is the holiday too? And what is, um?
So the day before and after for, um, Christmas, so Christmas Eve, the day after Christmas, New Year's Eve, the day after New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve is a Sunday, so.
It would be that Friday.
Oh, it'll be that Friday.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
So just for clarification, the school is already closed for the holiday season. So the district normally, uh, we normally, the district normally is here that last week.
I know that.
I just, I just wanted to, you know, bring it to everyone's attention that the school is already closed. And I, and I, it, it doesn't look different. I think the concern is maybe, um, if there are packages or signatures or anything that needs to come to the school, that's taken care of.
No, my question is.
No, my question is typically, Dr. Jackson recommends dates. I just wanted to know which ones was already district holidays and which ones is staff using time for. Because it appears is if the twenty-ninth is the day before the holiday and we're normally closed, the district is normally closed, then that would be a normal paid holiday then, right? So the twenty-ninth, that Friday should be a paid holiday, though, right?
The twenty-ninth, yes, it should be.
Okay, so I'm just saying on there, it should reflect such. So then technically, staff is only taking time the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth in the second of January?
Yes.
Okay. So is the motion right then, if we're already legally closed on the twenty-ninth? Because if it's before and after the holiday and the is it always before and after the holiday on the first of the year, too?
Yes. Do you, do you want something different? You sure? Just let me know.
I didn't know it was before and after the holiday.
For Christmas and New Year?
Uh, for the New Year. Because then that's three days before the holiday, the holiday, and then after the holiday. So there's three paid holidays for New Year's and, and two paid holidays for Christmas.
Yes. Friday, the twenty-second, the day after, the twenty-sixth, Friday, the twenty-ninth, the day after, uh, New Year's is the second.
Wait, the twenty-second, they're closed, you're closed, too?
It's the day before.
Okay. The calendar doesn't reflect that.
Friday, the twenty-second.
I'm seeing up here.
Okay, that was, that wasn't even, we will correct that, but yes, those are the dates.
Okay, so the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth, which ones are district paid holidays?
The twenty-second.
Mm-hmm.
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth and the twenty-fifth then, too, right?
Yes.
And then you're saying Friday, the twenty-ninth, Monday, the first, and the second?
Yes, but people would be able to take their vacation on those, on those days if they needed to. With them not coming in.
But if it's district paid holidays, it's on New Year's Day?
We typically, so this is the practice. It has been before, the day before New Year's, the day before Christmas, the day after Christmas, and the day after New Year's. What else do you need? No, what's that? There's something, what else do you need?
So then the motion, it needs to be amended then, because we're closed the twenty-second, too, she's saying. So we're closed to Friday, the twenty-second through January second reopening on the third.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson. Can you redo that motion for me, sir? Resend that motion, make it again, add December twenty-second, Friday, the twenty-second to your motion.
Uh, sure.
I apologize.
I was like, wait.
I make a motion that the board approves to close the district on Friday, December twenty-second, Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, Thursday, December twenty-eighth, Friday, December twenty-ninth, and Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty-four.
I second. I second the motion. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Board president Hannah.
Yay.
Vice president Taylor.
Yay.
Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
Board member Buchanan.
Yeah.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yeah.
Board member Morris absent.
Motion carries. Recommend approval to establish a PTA Parent Teacher Association Charter for Lindup School District ninety-two. Dr. Jackson, Ms. Robertson, Ms. Perry Sapporo.
Good evening. Before we get into that, I wanted to go back to the question in terms of what Mr. Dawson asked. What is the new seventy? So I stand corrected. So the new seventy for reading is sixty-two point six seven percent. But we do need to work on math, which is eighty-nine point three five percent. Okay, so thank you for asking that.
Sixty-two point six seven percent.
Sixty-two point six seven percent. So previously it was seventy, so now it's down to sixty-two point six seven percent. And mathematics is eighty-nine point three five percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so now we're here to talk about the differences between PTO and PTO, PTA, and PTSO. And so it goes back to what we talked about in terms of the school improvement plan and going back to the board goals. So we're going to be going over that tonight so that you are aware. So when it comes to parent, parental organization, so we have PTO. So PTO is parent teacher organization, and so it's independent, just work within their school. PTO members have no such network or powerful advocacy beyond the local level. When it comes to PTA, so PTO advocates for all children regardless of location, provides a powerful network to effect change on local, state, as well as national level. When it comes to PTSO, which is the parent teacher student organization, it works with parents and faculty to organize and facilitate events both during and after school hours and works towards building a community and school connection. So similarities. So the similarities of PTO, PTA, and PTSO. Parent teacher organization, either PTO, PTA, or PTSO is a group of teachers and parent volunteers who collaborate together in order to improve the school environment. When we're talking about this, this is voluntarily voluntary. So PTSO previously, when we, when we revamped it, when Ms. Colberston was here, we had PTSO. And so PTSO, every single teacher in LTA was a member, every single teacher. And we paid our dues. Our dues back then were about ten dollars. So every single teacher paid their dues and we were all part of PTSO. When it comes to PTA, the charges are different. It's five dollars. Where PTSO, those, that ten dollars went directly to PTSO in terms of how they used it. With PTA, the charge is five dollars, but it's split between the national as well as state PTA. So that's five dollars. So you can see the split there. Fun fact, did you know that we used to have PTA? It was a long time ago, way before I was born. It was like nineteen sixty-five. But we used to have PTA here at Lindup, and we used to have Mothers of Lindup. So when we did our research, we had found out, so Mothers of Lindup, they had their own governing board and they joined the PTA. And so PTA and Mothers of Lindup were able to come together. I even talked about that at the PTSO meeting, how before Lindup School was ran by parents. Parents ran this place right here, used to be our lunchroom. We used to have a tarp that would come out, and this was our lunchroom. It was run all by parents, which were all part of PTSO. So PTSO, PTA has been here for a very, very long time, and they do a lot, a lot of good things for our teachers as well as our students. I will give it over to Dr. Robertson in terms of the major differences between PTO, PTA, and PTSO.
Good evening. Some of the major differences between PTO and PTA and PTSO. PTO is a parent teacher organization, as Ms. O had stated earlier, but their organization is ran independently. They have their own bylaws, they're an independent organization, and their focuses are directly on their school or their town. Whereas PTA is a nationally parent-run organization. PTA is supported by this organization as well on the national and the state level. They have resources that are available to PTA members and their affiliates. And they also have a political stand in the national and state level. PTSO is, have similarities to the PTO. The only difference is, is that it offers the student aspect. But PTA can also have student advocates as well, and that would be PTSA. Some highlights of PTA. PTA has a stand in the political arena. PTA is on a national level as well as the state level. The PTA has the support of PACE PTA members as well as PTA volunteers to help support the local PTA members. They offer free training. They offer support and all type of access to grants and funding that'll be available to our students as well as our staff, as well as our families. PTA collects state and national level dues from each member. That would be the teachers, the parents. Whoever is in that PTA will pay a national and state level dues. PTA can also add additional funds to that, and then that money can be utilized however the local PTA decides. So the five dollars would go to the national and state level. If the PTA here would like to make that seven dollars, that two dollars extra, PTA can, the local PTA can utilize it however they see fit. PTO and PTSO have to source and develop their own resources. They can determine however they want to use their money. They also are able to pay for necess, but they would have to pay for training. They would have to pay for professional development. Whereas PTA has these resources available to them. PTO and PTSOs are independently run organizations that are ran within the school, but they do not have the network and the support of another organization behind them, whereas PTA does. And that's one of the major differences between the two. One thing that we've been talking about is our improvement plan that was given to us by our Board of Education. And on this, it's been given to you in a packet. I know the writing is a little small, but some of the things that we wanted to highlight was how does PTA, PTO, PTSO, how it all correlates to our grander plan. One highlight that I'm very passionate about, about the PTA that offers are the grants and the funding that'll be available to our teachers and our staff and our students and our parents. Some of the things like STEM family connections, some things like a family engagement in terms of healthy living, mental health programs that they have. Just last year, PTA gave over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to local PTA members in order to have grants. You don't have to be proficient at grant writing in order to get these opportunities. It's a simple form that the local PTA can fill out in order to have access to this money. I think is decided to, to highlight that. Our blue ribbon connection. So one thing that we are trying to do at Lindup is become a blue ribbon school. And a little while ago, we had a survey, and one of the things that we had a critical need in was student-focused support and continuous improvement. And one of the things that PTA offers is the benefit of getting support on a national and state level as well as getting support financially that we are looking to tap into their resources. On this slide in which you can click on, there's a link that shows you the difference between PTA bylaws and PTO PTSO bylaws. The bylaws for PTA has guidelines that are set up that all members have to adhere to, whereas PTO and PTSO can create their own bylaws. They do have an organization that can give you advice, but PTO and PTSO, they run independently, so they're not governed as if PTA is. They have a governing body that helps guide them and make sure that they are adhering to certain restrictions and guidelines. Here are some of the benefits here of being on a PTA member. There's resource, resources that they have for parents, e-learning, online courses, materials, awards, and grant scholarship opportunities. They give out coupons and things like that for people who are on the PTA, and it's just a wealth of information that is there that's available. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make the motion that the board approves to establish a Parent Teacher Association, PTA Charter for Lindup School District ninety-two.
Tony Taylor, I second that motion.
Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Board member Williams Wilford.
That's same.
Board member Dawson.
I abstain.
Board member Buchanan.
Yeah.
Board secretary Griffin.
Yay.
Board president Hannah.
Yay.
Vice president Taylor.
Yay.
Motion carries.
Board member Morris absent.
He's absent. That motion carries. Board president report, the president, the report that I had, I spoke about earlier in regards to our triple I conference. That was it. I had, I had some notes that I did leave in my office. Sorry. But for the most part, I was talking about triple I and the, me being able to meet other board presidents from throughout the state of Illinois and speak to them in regards to what goes on in their districts. So it was wonderful, and thank you guys for letting us go. All right.
I would like to thank everyone for the birthday wishes. I was blessed to have another one. I thank God for that, and thank God for Lindup. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Madam Secretary. Yeah, I don't, I'm not special. It's okay.
Yeah, where's yours?
My birthday was November third.
I know. Where is yours?
It's all right.
Facebook Splice, didn't it?
That is okay. No worries. Thank you. All right, Dr. Jackson, superintendent's report.
Right, thank you so much. Thank you so much, President Hannah. You know, we would never forget you. Every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation. And every city of, or house divided against itself shall not stand. Thank you all for standing as one. Community District Relations High School, nineteen eighteen twenty-three. This is probably the largest turnout that we have ever had, at least as long as I have been here. Thoroughly engaging, and the parents were super excited to be there and also to take advantage of the opportunities to receive funding for high school. If they did not plan to attend Proviso East or West or even PMSA. So just having those different opportunities and access, and so we are grateful for that. Next for community relations, we have Middle School for Excellence. That was for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Again, we had a panel, same as we did last year, and the Fire Department, Police Department, Park District. And I'm not sure if the library was able to make it out, but they came out, they talked about the impacts of social media, what can be done, and what is very, a hot topic now is with human sex trafficking to make sure that our families are aware. Another one under board goal number five for community district relations. We had a town hall meeting on the fifteenth of November to talk about PTA. The PTA representatives were virtual. They were coming out. Uh, they were coming out in person. However, uh the person who was coming out, her mom, eighty-seven-year-old mother, had contracted COVID and she did not want to um infect anyone else, and so that is why they were uh virtual. Community Relations, again, our winter program is on the thirteenth of December. Our Board of Education will be serving the staff on that day. The winter program begins at six and dinner for staff will begin at four P M.
Oh, happy birthday, Mr. Hannah.
Okay, so maybe you guys didn't forgive me. Thank you.
And thank you um so much uh always for just supporting us. And we also uh wanted to just let you know that uh we do have something special for you inside. Those of you who are still here, there are some apple pies in the back. Um, thank you so much, uh Mrs. Wilford, those are from Costco. It's just while they last, please feel free to take one, they're four-pound apple pies. So enjoy, enjoy and happy eating. That concludes my report. Thank you. Are there any more public comments?
I know I took my sheet, so I apologize. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
And uh Madam Mayor.
One second, one second. I think, I think she said there, there is no more sheets back there, I don't know. Yeah. Before, before we go to uh public comment, we have some committee reports to do, okay?
Okay.
Few seconds. Personnel Committee Meeting, Mr. Hannah, Ms. Griffin, Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at one thirty P M. That next meeting date is to be determined. Ms. Griffin, did you have anything for that?
Um, no, basically that Dr. Jackson was going over the status of what our personnel was up to date.
Okay. Thank you. Finance Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Hannah, that, that next meeting date is to be determined. Pace Governing Board Meeting, uh Mr. Dawson, Mr. Morris, Wednesday, October, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. That next meeting date is Wednesday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at six, Mr. Dawson.
Uh, so I, the Pace meeting was actually scheduled is, was on the same night as the P T A thing. That's why I couldn't be there, so it was, P T A thing was scheduled on our night. Uh, I was there, but there's nothing, really I wanted to report outside the fact that we decided that each member in the member districts is gonna pick one of the parts of Pace to take on as their personal, like um connected school. And I was able to go to the Thanksgiving dinner for the Pace Academy, which houses the autism students. And it was just really hard feeling uh feeling to see how the kids communicated with each other and their teachers and bonded and, you know, they bursting at the seams over there, so some of our Lindop kids are there as well, I was able to meet them, and they're doing really good work over there. So I just wanted to announce that, you know, they are really doing good work.
Thank you. Um, Para C I A Committee Meeting, Mr. Morris, Ms. Taylor, Thursday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at one P M. Anything, Ms. Taylor?
Dr. Jackson. So uh during our pair of meeting, we were super excited because um that is the Principal Evaluation Reform Act. And so that uh requires a collaboration between the staff and the administration. Uh, normally that meeting takes about maybe three days or maybe a week long before we come to a consensus. This uh last meeting, and because of the board's support uh with us and backing and moving towards academic achievement, it was only four hours. There was no uh contention there. Everyone knew that the orders from the board was to move the children forward, and we know that we could not move the children forward if we still had um our goals where it was not impactful. And so we are thankful for uh for that, so thank you.
Thank you. Um. Safety? Uh, no, 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 did I miss safety? Okay, Safety S E L Committee Meeting, Mr. Morris, Mr. Buchanan, Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at four P M. That next meeting date is to be determined. Mr. Buchanan, anything you wanna tell us?
Uh, you skip technology?
It says seven.
I ain't, I haven't got.
That's uh seven.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Policy Committee, Dawson, Ms. Williams Wilford, Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-three at four thirty P M. All right, thank you.
We have boatload of policies over there coming up.
Technology Committee Meeting, Ms. Taylor, Mr. Buchanan, Thursday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at four P M. Ms. Taylor, anything we need to know?
No, I think everything was covered um in the meeting um today in regards to the i- uh isolate uh technology.
Thank you.
Miss Ellis, do you have anything to add?
Lighting? Come on.
And we, and we also discussed replacing the lighting on the stage over there, which is over from like nineteen eighties, nineties, so that's something we discussed.
Thank you so much. Strategic Planning Committee Meeting, all board members, that next meeting date is to be determined. Community Engagement Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Buchanan, excuse me, that next meeting date is to be determined. Negotiation Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Hannah, that next meeting day is to be determined. Before we move on to public comments, Mr. and Mrs. Patterson. If these are about the same thing, only one of you guys can talk. I didn't, I didn't hear you, Ms. Patterson.
Uh, the current board was asking, we were only asking to finish out the school year. That's all we started out asking for.
Okay.
Us, so that, that was the request that the board for P T S O.
Okay, okay. That, that was for you, Ms. Patterson? Okay, okay, cool. Mr. Patterson.
Thank you. Um, you guys gave me a bunch of time before some would be short too. I do thank you all for listening to uh everything I have to say. I do appreciate that and I do respect what you guys voted on, just so everybody know that, you know, I wouldn't come up here with concerns and be and not support you guys and what you say you wanna do. Because if it went the way I thought it should go, I would've wanted you all to support me too. So it's fair that I just wanna clear the air and let you guys know that I'm glad that you guys did hear me out. But I did wanna speak to the board and let you guys know that, um, I know uh Mayor got up and she was saying that if things, uh if I wanted to uh implement anything or do some stuff, that uh I had a chance to run. I have no interest in uh running, but that doesn't mean that I can't help and I can't contribute because I don't wanna be on the board. I have, I'm not running for it or planning to run for the board, so I kinda resent that comment that she made about I could've ran. Doesn't make what I say rel- more relevant or not. Uh, you know, I do wanna help the school district as best as I can, you know, and that's what I'm after. I have kids here, the mayor does not, so we have different passion levels, I'm sure. I, I agree, we all are taxpayers here, but my interest is a little more vested, I would say, cuz my child goes here. Also, there was a stat throughout about how we made an increase uh that the mayor spoke of, but overall, we're not doing well with the test scores. I think all of us can agree with that, we have some improvement. So for us to come out and throw out one good stat and two in support of, you know, Dr. Jackson and the school district, and I do think that as parents, we need to also come and voice our opinion and push, cuz we demand that. You know, eighty-some percent in math, sixty percent in reading, that's unacceptable. You know, Dr. Jackson's been with us for eight years, and I think that's plenty enough time uh for the, uh per the dive report, you know, people with our demographics and our economics. Uh, it's z- the, the time to retain a superintendent is zero, is nineteen months to three years. At max, when you retain in good standing school districts with the test score, six years. So I think we've get it, given enough time for us to see better results and more results. And we do wanna help the teachers and administration do whatever they have to do. But, you know, at the same time, we also, with parents that have kids here, we're demanding that the board, you know, uh ask a little bit more questions, ask for some feedback. I think tonight was awesome that you all gave those stats, you know, but it also, I'm sure I seen a lot of you guys eyes get wide when you heard those, some of those numbers. You know, I think we all have a concern here and we do share the same, you know, goal. But at the same time, we also have to set our expectations high, and if things aren't working, we need to start looking for a new talent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Next, Mayor Thompson.
Greetings again. First of all, I wanna say happy Thanksgiving to the Board of Education, the teachers and the staff. And every word that I said earlier, I stand on that tin toes to the concrete and I meant it. Uh, one thing that's for sure and for certain, you don't have to have a student in the school to have a passion to serve the students in this district. Penny Wilford don't have any students in the clu- school. Tanya Taylor don't have any students in the school. Another does, Cheryl Griffin, but guess what? They come here and they do their due diligence to serve this district. So I digress. So while listening to conversation that took place earlier in um in the presentations, some things that I do wanna highlight, and I don't know if anybody reads the Lindop School District mission statement, but it's on the agenda. And it clearly says, our mission is to provide a high-quality education that inspires each student to become self-disciplined, passionate, lifelong learner who is equipped to flourish in an ever-changing global society. This board is making sure that happens. Uh, this achievement through partnerships based on mutual respect and shared accountability. This is what's happening with this school board. They are doing their job based off the mission statement. We may not always get along, and that's okay, it's good to be different. It's good to have parents have a voice and have a say because their children are here. But at the end of the day, the Board of Education hires one employee and we hope that, they hold that one employee accountable. So I'm on the mayor's task force of education and I don't, and I don't talk about these things, but I'm on the mayor's education task force for the National Leader Cities. And at this past conference, we talked about the tenure of superintendents and being able to move district forwards. Most superintendent's tiers are up to eighteen months. Although Dr. Jackson has been here eight years, guess what? The district is moving in the right direction and it takes time because you have to look at your staff. Are the teachers showing up to school to come to work to do their jobs every day? Are they being paid fairly to do their jobs? Because guess what? Administration gotta have the support of the teaching staff to do their job to make this district function the way that it needs to function. To be here in a district eight years, that's called stability. You all have provided stability in this district and for many years, and I know Ms. Wilford, Ms. Taylor, and I'm sure Ms. Griffin has been on this board long enough to see the multiple superintendents that we have. I believe she is the longest-serving superintendent this district has had since Dr. Bass. And if it's, if I'm wrong, do your research and check it out for yourself. She is the longest superintendent. The other factor that plays into this, we was in a national crisis called the coronavirus pandemic. How do we make up for that? So it's gonna take time to come back from that. And guess what? It just didn't impact our students, guess who else it impacted? It impacted our staff, the teachers. They have families that they go to, so when do we have compassion and empathy for the human? We talking about humanity when we talk about how we look at the family at large. So it's not just about I and me, it's about us and we and how to support that. And it takes the whole community to be engaged. One thing I did do, I stepped up to the plate. Because this district could not get substitute teachers when the teachers was calling out. I made a day in my week to come provide, to be in a classroom, to be a substitute teacher. And some board members felt that that was inappropriate, but guess what? The parents that have college degrees in education, they didn't do it. And guess what? When I did register to serve for that, and I won't, and I, this is, this is for public record. When I did sign up to be a son, the teacher that had called out, when I got called in, they came to work. It's not that I'm watching the teacher or seeing what they do in their classroom to report back to anybody, but the love and passion that I have for education is why I did it. I can carve time out of my busy schedule to make sure that our children get to see a figure model in our community, showing love and kindness to show up, to greet them with a smile, to greet them with a hello, how can I help you today? But guess what? I believe tutor at stu- uh teacher absentee's went down a little bit because they was afraid I was gonna show up in that classroom. So if that's what it takes for our teachers to come to work, to do their job and not be badgered, not feel unsafe, not feel like they're not loved and cared by the administration or the Board of Education, it's whatever it takes to have student achievement. And if more people stepped up to the plate and put their credentials, their college credentials on the line and say, I'm going in a classroom to help out the school district, we will run more efficiently. The other thing I would say, I was listening to the business manager talking about the tax levy. And everybody know, when we talk about the tax levy, he only gave you a synopsis of education, tax levies through the different districts, our high school district, Trident College, Lindop District. But what I didn't hear him say is how it impacts the whole community when we looking at our tax dollars. So if we can raise the levy five percent, and that's the cap, cuz if they go over five percent, it's gotta go before the public through a referendum to increase the levies. But what he didn't say is that five percent is, you know, how many students, what is our uh? How many students are in the school? How much do we spend on each student? What is the debt service? We need to ask the intentional questions when it comes to spending money in this district to see if we're getting a value of our dollars for our tax dollars. It's not that we don't wanna pay for education, or we don't feel like we can't afford education, but we have to know the right questions to ask and how this board gotta make a decision on how it impacts the taxpayer. And so those are the questions that I have. How many students we have? How much we spend on each student? And what is the debt service owe? Because the average citizen, what they don't know is that the Lindop School District, cuz I look at my tax bill and I get the call from the community about taxes being raised. But what they don't act, what we don't get to talk about is Lindop takes the bulk of our tax dollars. Why is that? If our student achievement is not where it needs to be. So we put our money where our mouths are, and if we say, we got three hundred and thirty-five kids, I don't know.
Three thirteen, twenty-seven thousand.
How much do we spend on each student? How do we break that down? Are we paying our teachers what they deserve to make based off the student population? Are we valuing our teachers? Because that's when we see real growth. When the teachers come to work and they showing love and kindness to the kids, guess what the kid's gonna do? They're gonna perform. My daughter is an educator. Her students are performing for her because I know she's go into that classroom with love and kindness every single day. And that's my charge to the teachers that educate our children in broad view. We are taking our kids to the next level. That means we want high-level teaching taking place. We want you to show up to the classroom with love and kindness so that they can perform because they come to school with so other many things that takes place. So when we say thinking outside the box, Ms. O, you doing it. You thinking outside the box because to give a parent an alarm clock because they work nights to make sure that they students can get here, that's intentional work. And the board should amend the administration for being intentional for educating our children and leaving out the distractions. That's intentional work. And so when we have two board members abstaining from a vote for a E- a P T A and a P T O, I'm sure you had plenty of time to investigate what takes place. So I just wanna encourage the community that abstention is not a no because they abstain and it went with the majority and that mean it was a yes. It just mean that they was present in the body. They was here at the board meeting, they heard the conversation, but they vote went toward the majority and that was a yes. So I thank those that was intentional about doing the work and coming up to a solution what's best for everybody in this school district, parents, teachers and administration, because we have to work together to get to blue ribbon status. And I believe that is happening under the leadership of Dr. Jackson. And I believe that is happening under the leadership of Dr. Jackson. Intentional work, raising scores, getting to blue level status. Stay focused, stay focused, stay focused. Cuz it's all about the students being able to compete on a global level. That's the vision that I hope that Lindop is going for, staying Lindop strong, broad view strong. But I say it again, I pay attention. I don't just come to this board meeting, I go to the Park District meeting, I go to the library meeting and I go to District two oh nine meeting. I'm intentional about what makes us work collaborative through partnerships in our communities. So thank you. Happy Thanksgiving and God bless you.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Madam Vice President.
We're now heading into executive session. We're gonna read policy section two, colon, two, two, zero, dash, E two. I moved at the board going to close session under five Illinois school code one twenty slash two C one, four, eight, nine and ten to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline or performance of a specific employee of the public body. Evidence or testimony presented in an open hearing or in a closed hearing where specifically authorized by law. Security procedures, school building, safety and security. Student disciplinary cases and a placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students at nine oh one P M.
A second. Hannah.
Board President Hannah.
Yay.
Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Buchanan.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Morris abstain, Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Motion carries. Thank you all. We'll see you next month.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out.